As soon as we're ready, ready? All right, I'm going to call to order the council meeting on May 25th at 7:31. First up on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is the justice for all. All right, roll call, please.
Alder Allen?
Present.
Alder Radafrafa?
Here.
Alder Gerher?
Here.
Alder Her?
Present.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strossman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And just a reminder for members of the public, I know there's a couple items people want to speak on, that the public has three minutes on those items, I'll keep track of that. But first up is public appearances, non-agenda items, new appointments, we've got a few new appointments here. First up is Sarah Schroeder. It took me a couple of years to get it right, but come on up and tell us why you'd like to be on Parks Commission.
Yes, thank you for having me here tonight, excited to be back and see everyone. I have been a District 3 resident since 2005, and I'm interested in serving on parks because it is something that I'm really passionate about. I think that the parks really make a difference within Pittsburgh residents' lives, their quality of life, the green space, the recreation. I really enjoyed serving on the Parks Commission when I was originally appointed in 2017, and I'd love to be able to continue to do that, and definitely can answer any questions or concerns.
All right, any questions for Sarah at all? Is there a motion then?
Move approval.
Moved by Jay.
Second.
So, who are the people, who are the people that we are replacing in parks?
So, Sarah, I am having replace Mark Vivian, and Mike, as you can see here, is agreed to go to zoning board of appeals, and then Heidi, who is in District 1, is replacing Dave Gardner, who is in District 2. So, all right, I've got a motion and a second, all in favor of approving Sarah, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is Heidi here? Around the line? Oh, Heidi, oh, welcome, all right. Go ahead and tell us what, why you're interested in serving.
Well, I've been a Pittsburgh resident for, I don't know, roughly five years. I also am an employee of the town of Middleton, where I also work on the Park Commission there, mostly as just sort of a facilitator and minutes taker, but I love parks, I love green spaces, and spent a lot of time there when my kids were growing up, so I would love to be able to serve Pittsburgh in that capacity.
And you live in District 1?
Correct.
Yep, okay, good. Yeah, Gabriela?
This is more for you, Aaron. I'm curious about the decision not to reappoint David Gardner, because he has always struck me as like one of the most engaged members of the Park Commission, and he was giving great feedback about the parks and open space plans. I'm just like, honestly, like kind of shocked that he's not being reappointed, and no offense to you, Heidi, at all, I'm just like really surprised that that's what's happening here. Can you talk a little bit about what your rationale is?
There's two, one, I think that there's no District 1 representation, I think that's important, I think, you know, in our boards, that there's probably a lack of District 1 representation, so wanting to make sure we get those voices in there. And then, honestly, the other is, I've seen many emails where David has not been very professional and kind to other people, and I, I think that it's not something that I approve of, and so that was the other reason why.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just add, you know, I've talked to Heidi quite a bit, and she brings a lot of passion, she is an hero of mine, and I think she'll do a great job for us, she has tons of experience that she brings to the table for us.
All right, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Sent by, I think I heard Randy first, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay?
I'd like to abstain.
Abstain, all right.
Me too.
All right, two abstentions. All right, that's approved, thank you very much, Heidi. All right, and then, so Mark Vivian, so I think I mentioned that he was on parks, and he is in District 3, which Sarah's also in District 3, there's another person in District 3, and so I didn't want to have too many people on District, from District 3, so I did ask him to kind of go to zoning board of appeals instead, and I didn't ask him to come in only because, I mean, he would have liked to stay in parks, but I wanted to keep Sarah's experience on parks. Hopefully that people are okay with just approving him without having him come in, he's agreed to do this, I think his knowledge and experience would be valuable on the zoning board of appeals, so hopefully people are okay with him not coming in, I didn't ask him to kind of go out of his way.
Second.
Second by Jay. Any questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. I don't have anything else for non-agenda items, so seeing nothing else, we can go to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by Jay.
Second.
Sent by Randy. Is there anything that someone wants to take out of the consent agenda and do separately? All right, seeing nothing, then all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. I know Randy, you wanted to go and quick change the agenda, didn't you?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move, I think it's item 7G, resolution R-61-21, move it toward the top of the agenda after administrator's report, just for the fact that we have a number of Pittsburgh residents that would like to speak to the resolution.
All right.
I will second the motion to amend the agenda.
All right, sent by Jay, any comments at all, or concerns, questions? All right, all in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is amended, so, but first is administrator's report, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, there will not be a council meeting on Tuesday, July 13th, just for everybody's calendars, and we're working with staff on the referral process to account and adjust for that, so just a heads up for everybody. We continue to stay in communication, our Pittsburgh postal contract station remains open, the current operator is working with a couple of potential future operators, but please continue to patronize the Pittsburgh postal contract station at Hattree Hill, and I'll provide further updates at future council meetings. Pittsburgh's Memorial Day observance will be coming up on Monday, May 31st, at the Bob Schley Memorial Gorman Wayside Park. Ms. Jana Woodhouse, veteran of the Navy, will serve as the keynote speaker with the theme of sacrifice this year. Please bring a chair if you're coming out to the park for the memorial, and in fact, TV will also be live streaming the observance this year for us. Just to note that city staff, both from Public Works and also from planning, we submitted earmarks requests to Senator Baldwin and to Congressman Mark Polkan's office, both for City of Pittsburgh stormwater management, climate change, resiliency projects, and then also for the hub project there, so we'll keep you posted on the progress of those requests through our congressional representatives there. And then, the West Clayton Road closed permanently at the railroad tracks, will be closed permanently starting on June 1st there. This is where we added a crossing at Central Park Place, but we had to give up a crossing per the, working with the railroad line there. So again, West Clayton Road will close permanently on June 1st, just for the public. And then I know multiple alders have received some inquiries regarding the PFAS issue there, and this is just a response from our Public Works Department for the public, if you're interested in that issue. The city has been following the increasing awareness of PFAS and the potential threats it may have in drinking water. Wisconsin's Department of Health Services has proposed limits of detection for various types of PFAS. These limits are currently under review at the Department of Natural Resources. When the Madison Water Utility first released their 2017 limited PFAS testing results, the City of Pittsburgh reviewed this data. PFAS were found in two Madison wells at that time, both wells were not located near Pittsburgh. More comprehensive testing results from 2020 show PFAS are present in every Madison well. Note that no well in Madison exceeds the PFAS limits proposed by DHS. The City of Pittsburgh will be testing for PFAS in June. The intent of this testing is to verify that our wells do not exceed any proposed limits, and if they do, to be prepared to meet compliance regulations when the limits are established. And if you have any questions, our staff contact on that is Tracy Foss in our Public Works Department, but we just wanted to get that word out to the public, because we know there were various alders that were receiving multiple kind of emails, so we thought we'd just announce this information publicly, so the public is aware of that. And just a couple of items here, HR posted the police chief position today, that will remain open through June 28th for that recruitment for the police chief position. The Parks Department is pleased to report, and this is a popular one for the public, the splash pad will be opening June 1st. So anybody that's looking to have some fun at the splash pad, it opens June 1st. The assessing department board of review is scheduled for June 7th, that's coming up, and the minor comp plan amendments were due today, and I think we received one for the Fahy South project over there. That's all that I have to report.
All right, Julie, a question?
Yes, Mike, do you know when the result for the PFAS are going to be ready, or, you know, how long it takes to have the result?
I guess I don't know that, I just kind of read the statement that we had from Tracy Foss, which was a response to a constituent, but I can do some follow-up and just ask if we're doing testing in June, I don't know how long it takes to kind of get the results, but I can find out more of a timetable.
Because I think it's going to be great that we send with the, when we send the next water bill to the resident, that we send an update included there, so explain what we are doing, or if we have the result ready by that time, it would be great.
What I'll do is, I'll check with Tracy, I'll ask that question, and then maybe I can give an update at the next council meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah.
You know, all right, go ahead.
And another thing that I would like to, that you would like to add in the, in the city administrator report is, because we are getting close to the town of Madison annexation, and if you can provide us an update, what the city's doing, what is the plan, you know, if we can have like maybe once a month, an update in your city, in your city administrator report, it would be great.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure. I've got Jay and then Gabriela.
Mike, regarding the West Clayton Road, have we had any contact from, I mean, there's about a dozen or so houses back there, and now the only access they're going to have, the only ingress or egress they're going to have is that road that goes by the Jehovah's Witness Building. Have we heard anything from any of the residents? Are they aware that this road is being closed?
It was an announcement that was put out by Public Works, so, you know, it went out publicly, that's why I just wanted to kind of reinforce it tonight, because it's coming up next week. I know when we were making the request to, of the railroad for the Central Park Place crossing, there was information that went out at that point in time, you know, to, just to communicate and work with the residents, you know, there, but I can maybe check with Public Works and just see if we've done any other additional outreach to those residents right along that corridor, and just see besides the public announcement, so I could check in with Bill and his team tomorrow, just to see if there's anything additional.
I know this has been on the planning for a while, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully I have, but.
Yeah, it's been kind of three years in the making, I think, since we got the approval for the new crossing, and then we were, had a certain timeframe to close the existing one that was required.
Yeah, Gabriela, and then I'll be after that.
Mike, is it, is it possible, or is that PFAS statement from Tracy going to be anywhere on the website, so that if, yeah, I have the text through an email, but is it possible that I can just point someone to a link on the website?
I'll check on that, too. I'm not sure if it's out there, but I'll check and let you know that.
Appreciate it.
And we'll get it posted, hopefully, and then maybe we can just send you the link.
Okay, I've got Randy, then Dave, then Julie, go ahead, Randy.
My comment is just to follow up to Jay's, that last summer, maybe June, July timeframe, Tom Clutter and I met with the neighbors on West Clayton, and was to discuss the railroad crossing, but their biggest concern was the water main coming through and so forth, but.
All right, Dave?
I'd just like to add on that issue about the wells, we have deep, you know, very deep wells, and the water that we're pulling is, I would say, it's relatively old, in the 1950s, they did atmospheric testing on nuclear weapons out in the Pacific, and that was tritium, and there were a few radioactive elements, and those, those can still be, those can still be found, and they are not, you know, they've never been found, you know, in our, in our water, so that's telling us that our water, you know, our deep wells, it takes a long time, a lot of filtering for the water to get in there, and, you know, they substantially predate, you know, the development of those forever chemicals, and so I'm confident in our, in our water system, that we are, we are safe from those unless, you know, someone came and dumped it into, dumped it in the well.
Julie?
Mike, a follow-up question. So, how do I, you promoting, or you informing the resident about this email that you just read from Tracy?
Part of the reason I read it tonight was just to help to get the word out to the public, because we know that you were getting them individually.
Yeah.
And Tracy had provided that response, so I think following Gabriela's suggestion there is maybe posting on the website, and then maybe announcing it again via social media, you know, to.
Yeah, and the Pittsburgh.
To help get the word out?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll work on that tomorrow, I'll check in with Tracy and see if we can make sure that gets posted on the website, and then we'll follow up with the social media and through Fact TV and our regular kind of communication channels there.
All right, I don't have any more questions for Mike for now, so we will move on, and so we'll go to the Transportation Transit Commission, resolution R-61-21, do you want to do the resolution?
I move approval of resolution R-61-21, resolution approving a typical section for the Lacy Road reconstruction project from Fitcherona Road to Seminole Highway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Jim, I'll give that, the Transportation Transit approve?
It failed, it was amended to add buffered bike lanes, and then that amended resolution failed.
All right, and what happened on Public Works?
Amendment to reduce the bed path to eight feet.
All right, and then finance, what did you do?
Finance, referring to council.
Referring to council, okay, and do you want to speak to what it is, Gabriela, just to explain to the public?
Yeah, so what we're currently, what my motion is intending is, is to bring back what is written in the resolution, which is 24-inch curb and gutter, 10-foot driving lanes, 2-foot bike buffer, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading, please scratch that, I am not reading from the resolution, I am reading from the memo. Okay. The resolution as written in the packet, which is 2-inch curb and gutter, 1-inch, I'm sorry, 2-foot curb and gutter, 1-foot gutter pan with 1-foot curb head, 5 feet of grading for future sidewalk on south side, 2 10-foot travel lanes, 2 5-foot bike lanes, 2 7-feet terrace on the north and south side, 1 10-to-12-foot shared use path on the north side.
All right, and before we get into citizen comments, Andrew or Bill, did you guys want to say anything before we go to the citizen comments?
Sure, yeah, I can kind of jump in, and first I want to apologize for all the different versions, thank you Gabriela for reading that. Just really quick, I'll kind of show, you know, one slide, just so everybody's kind of on the same page before we get to comments, and that would be, so, can you guys, can you guys see that? So, this is kind of all four options kind of on one screen, and so what you can see here is basically, you know, the February public meeting is kind of the original, and the resolution that Gabriela just read off is this one, so that's, you know, grading for the sidewalk with 10-foot travel lanes, 4-foot of asphalt with 1-foot of gutter pan for 5-foot bike lanes, and a 10-foot shared use path. The Board of Public Works amended that 10-foot shared use path to be an 8-foot shared use path, and then the staff recommendation included in the packet amends the, the resolution version to have 11-foot travel lanes. I just noted that, it goes back to that 10-foot path, so that's kind of all the different options. I'm happy to answer questions, I know that, you know, there's, there's a lot of nuance here, and I do have some kind of comparisons and some, you know, options to consider, like potential options for either adding or taking away, that was included in the packet, but I have that for reference as well, so, yeah, again, any questions, please let me know, thank you.
Can we begin with the, to public comments first, or do you have clarification?
Well, I just have questions of clarification that may guide the public.
All right.
The first question I have is, so the resolution as it stands right now does not include the 2-foot buffers?
Correct.
All right, and then, the only other question I had is, that would be relevant to what other people might say, is what is the cost of doing the grading on the south side of the road? Have we broken that cost out?
Yeah, and it kind of depends upon exactly what you're talking about, but we have kind of grading for the sidewalk and grading for the terrace separate out, so for, for just the sidewalk, it would be, so, you know, I can give that number, I think, I believe that together is about 175.
All right, so we'll go to public comments, and I believe Joe Thad and Steve are kind of all together with Bike Pittsburgh. If you have more comment, yeah, bringing the, more slips up if you have them, I'll get to you next, Aaron, in a second here. I think Joe is going first here.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Joe Imokoski, lifelong biker for transportation, decades of experience in Madison and Milwaukee, mixing with traffic, and the last few decades here in wonderful Pittsburgh. I negotiate this section of Lacy Road perhaps twice a week, and do not find it to be a particular challenge. I have the experience, I can take the whole lane when I think I deserve it, and I move out of it. I am concerned about our newer residents, where this is going to be a primary thoroughfare, and I'm concerned with their safety and, and don't have my experience, so I'd like to see us adopting the national standards to ensure the safety of our newer bikers.
Thad Schumacher, business owner, Pittsburgh, avid cyclist, and here in behalf of Bike Pittsburgh, we'd like to show a video, it's very important to know that not everybody rides a bike, right? So we don't know, some people don't know what it's like to be out on the road riding, so we took a video, and we'd like to show it, to give people some reference for what it's like to ride on this particular road, and I'll kind of narrate as I go, but this video was filmed, you can go ahead and play it, this video was filmed on a, 1, at 1:00 PM on May 6th, a Thursday, not very, not during a busy time of day, but you'll see that there's many cars that go by us. Sure.
Has all the, has all the, have all the council members reviewed this already?
I, I've watched it a couple times. I believe we've seen this, I watched all four and a half minutes of it previously.
So, we're leaving the Quarry Ridge recreational area, that would be at the west end of Lacy Road, and that's a very popular place for the youth to ride in the mountain bike course. We see a lot of youth there every day when we go to ride there, and I'm sure some of them ride on this road now to get there. As you see, we're riding in what we call like a paved shoulder, pretty nice spot to ride, but then abruptly, you see it ends, and, and you can see by the handlebars there, the road definitely needs to be redone, we all agree on that. And then as you, as we go along here, you can see that it's a double yellow line, we're going up a hill with a blind corner, and you'll see several motorists go around us even with oncoming traffic. This is a hill, so it's hard to ride up at speed, so speed varies as you go, and you can see we approach a driveway and more cars going by, and this is what it's like when there's no bike lane, there's no protection for the cyclists, basically they ride at the mercy of the cars around them, and that's not a very comfortable feeling sometimes. As we go further along, you're going to see that some cars pass as we crest the hill, and then I would just note, as we go over the hill, how we reach speeds of over 25 miles an hour, and that would not be safe on an 8-foot path with dogs, cats, and children and strollers, and you can't really go slower down the hill like that if you're using this as a transportation device instead of a recreational vehicle. So, these riders would prefer bike, bike lanes to side paths, generally smoother, straighter, and not stopping at minor side streets, no conflict points at driveways. Transportation riders like these are incompatible with a 3-to-12 mile an hour multi-use path, that's why we're advocating for a bike lane and buffered lanes. I'll let the video play out, once they start going downhill, you can see the speed, you could probably stop it. Thank you for letting me comment.
I have a question for Thad, so.
Oh, Kent? We don't really go back and forth with people, that gets out of control real quick.
Okay.
Sorry. Is there anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, so.
If you'd like to go through the second, because you missed the second half, a car going blind, double yellow, or blind yellow, and speed.
Can you play just a little more of that, Chad?
Okay. And this is where you can see the speed pick up, it'd be very difficult to go to, on an 8-foot path down this, at that speed. So, thanks for allowing us to comment, and I believe there's more people to talk, so.
All right, thank you. Steve Arnold's next, after Steve, I have David Haidt. Go ahead, Steve.
Hold on, David, I got Steve first, and then David, anyway. Steve Arnold, 2530 Targi Street, thank you for hearing us out. I have only three minutes, so I'm going to try to quickly go through the safety logic. First of all, the comprehensive plan says that this is an urban, going to be an urban collector road, so it needs curb and gutter for three reasons, to channel storm water for treatment, to reduce the road footprint, because it's much narrower than swales and shoulders, and to hold the road together, makes the pavement last longer. Disabled vehicles and those passing them have to be accommodated then within the curb faces, the minimum for that is 34 feet. The pavement width is best allocated as we propose with the 5-foot bike lanes, that's 4-foot of pavement, 1-foot of gutter, the 2-foot buffer, and a 10-foot travel lane. The buffer calms traffic, and the vehicles in the centers of their lane will be 1 foot farther apart, okay, and the minimum multi-use path width is 10 feet for two-way traffic. Pittsburgh observes this minimum throughout the city. Some points that have not been mentioned or have not heard mentioned publicly, the comprehensive plan is prescriptive, you are not supposed to pass things that are contradictory to the comprehensive plan. The bike and ped plan is part of the comprehensive plan, and it dictates the profile for an urban collector with this, the level of traffic that exists. with this, the level of traffic that exists today and is planned for the future for Lacy Road. There is a three-foot passing law in Wisconsin. The Public Works Profile or, or, um, cross-section was proposed would not allow a, a truck that's eight foot wide to pass a bicyclist with the required three-foot clearance. The road would be too narrow. And finally, if the common council specifies a design that's substandard according to its own adopted plans and to national standards, and there is a crash, uh, you all and the designer could be held liable. And as, uh, speaking as a Fitchburg taxpayer, I would ask you not to do that. So, uh, we would like to see the buffers, the additional pavement width to accommodate buffers added back in as an amendment, and we'd like the path to remain at ten feet or perhaps larger if, if the engineers think that it should be wider. Uh, are there any questions on my presentation?
Thank you, Steve. All right, I've got David next, and then Tony Hartman after that. Go ahead, David.
Um, just a quick comment. You know, I've, I've heard this issue of, uh, liability of the council and the city in a variety of contexts, and it would be helpful at some point, I think, for the, the council to be apprised of in general what the liability issues are with regard. My understanding is that there's a significant amount of immunity that's afforded to the city, anyway. So I've, uh, studied the publicly available information regarding the reconstruction project, and in particular that, um, proposed by, uh, the group of concerned residents with the seven alternatives. And each of those residents is knowledgeable, prudent, and has an established track record of working constructively with city government to improve the welfare of the Fitchburg residents. DPW has incorporated a significant subset of their proposed alternatives, thereby reducing project costs, decreasing ecological degradation, and furthering preservation of the scenic beauty and rural character of the surrounding area. Those residents have requested that DPW develop a full fact basis on seven additional options that have the potential to further improve the design with regard to preservation of those qualities. Based on those facts, I'm in opposition to the resolution and ask that the council direct DPW to develop the additional data as requested by the resident group. Once that data's in hand, a systematic and replicable evaluation of the alternatives, appropriately evaluating environmental and aesthetic qualities can be expeditiously completed and the project plan adjusted accordingly if necessary. These proposed alternatives focus on ensuring that constructed infrastructure is compatible with the services and benefits provided by natural ecosystems and the need to place a very high value on conserving these irreplaceable community assets. This prioritization reflects the sentiment of many Fitchburg residents as over the past ten years, surveys have consistently shown that maintaining these qualities among, is among their highest priorities. The conclusion of the McFadden memo asks specifically for feedback for the council on what features should be included. My interpretation's a bit different. I interpret it as the DPW specifically asking the council whether and to what degree it is required to consider environmental, aesthetic, health, and other quality of life criteria in its project planning process. Therefore, your vote tonight constitutes a public declaration of the strength of the qualities commitment to a process that values the preservation of the environmental, public health, scenic character, and quality of life assets of our community. In an appeal to the value of experience, my uncle, the late, great Clyde Haight, was director of Public Works for the city of Whordier, California, which is located eight miles from Disneyland, from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen eighty. It was a period which saw the population explode from twenty-five thousand to sixty-eight thousand, and some of my earliest memories are of inspecting huge public progress, in-progress, public workers' projects with him. Two of his guiding maxims were, "There are no do-overs in public works' projects," and "Getting things done is easy." The real trick and magic is to get them done right.
Perfect timing. All right. Tony, and then after Tony is Bill Jetzer. Go ahead, Tony.
Thanks, Mayor. Frankly, I'm a little torqued at some of my neighbors tonight. Um, these are same folks that just a few years ago demanded that the council follow the North Stoner Prairie Development Plan. Now, when it's convenient, they're perfectly happy to chuck the entire bicycle and pedestrian plan that took years to be crafted and was adopted by the city council in twenty-seventeen. They don't seem to give a rip about designing safer, complete streets. In fact, they're happy to get rid of design features like medians and sidewalks that are recommended for traffic calming and pedestrians. They told us last month that they want to preserve the city's rural character by making Lacy Road, which I don't have to remind you, but probably will anyway, that, you know, this is the road that runs right in front of a school building a half a mile away, fire station, churches, our city hall, the library, banks, apartment buildings, businesses like Promega and Phoenix Nuclear. They say that they're for a better environmental footprint, yet they oppose efforts throughout the city to increase density or improve our urban core, including increasing transportation and housing choices. So let's set the record straight. A small but vocal group has had at least four meetings with city staff this spring. Hats off to city staff for giving them that much time. They asked forty-nine questions first, then another forty-nine questions, plus myriad other questions about the questions to their, or the answers to their questions, sucking up valuable staff time and basically haranguing conscientious staff members. So this is all happening when Fitchburg's without a city administrator, and frankly, it's rude and really, during this last crazy year, unconscionable. They've been bending the ears of every one of you for the past several months and continue to ask for delays. Shame on them for this selfish behavior. These folks need to acknowledge that Fitchburg is in Dane County, the fastest-growing county in the state, and that planning for the next fifty years includes planning for folks under fifty, not selfishly just us baby boomers. That means equity, inclusion, diversity, electric vehicles, public transit, bike commuters, live-work options, condos, townhomes, and yes, apartments. So I've mentioned this before, but cycling is an economic development issue here in Fitchburg. You all know that in addition to being progressive, I'm about economic development. One point four billion in the state of Wisconsin before COVID and more last year. So this is annual spending. The chamber gets it. We're trying to go for gold here. If we don't add features like we're talking about for this road, we're shooting ourselves in the foot on that score. Finally, just this morning, as if to emphasize the needs for all this, I'm on a long bike ride. I come back and a hundred yards from my house, I'm just about taken out by a dump truck coming over Whalen Road in one of the sections without any shoulders at all. So I just want to let you know that at a minimum, we want the ten-foot travel lanes, the two-foot buffers, four-foot bike lanes, and the breakdown lanes. You call them both because that's what they are, and one-foot curb and gutter. Of course, a ten-foot multi-use.
Tony, I gotta catch you there. Thank you very much.
My timer got you by about five seconds. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, uh, I have Bill, and then after Bill is Kelly Jetzer. Go ahead, Bill.
Hi, Bill Jetzer, average citizen, wannabe bike commuter, although it's not that easy. It's not nearly as easy as it should be. Um, I firmly stand behind the recommendations put forward by Bike Fitchburg. I would also like to remind everyone here that the common council of Fitchburg, two years ago, passed a, a resolution regarding climate change and renewable energy, and how we want to get one hundred percent of the city's operational energy needs provided by renewable energy. And yet, I see that most of our road construction relegates non-motor vehicle traffic to second-class citizenship. I don't know how to reconcile those two points. If we want to encourage people to move to Fitchburg, we need to provide many of the amenities that, that, uh, Tony was just mentioning. Um, and we need to provide every citizen with the ability to get where they want to go with minimal fuss on foot, bike, transit, and then finally car. Car should be the last option rather than the first if we want to save our planet and prevent uncontrollable climate change. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kelly, go ahead.
Uh, I live very near McKee Park, and each year I walk or run hundreds of hours, logging thousands of miles on all those shared-use paths in Fitchburg. I'm out there every day of the year, and I know that these paths are used by people and pets of all ages and abilities. It's unsafe to force cyclists to share a ten-foot or eight-foot multi-use path with all the pedestrians and pets. According to Fitchburg's Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan from twenty-seventeen, the Lacy Road project should have a five-foot bike lane and a two-foot buffer. Opting for a four-foot shoulder and no bike, marked bike lane makes it clear that cars and dump trucks are the only road users whose needs are being prioritized. I highly recommend that you stick to the twenty-seventeen Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan and help take the city in the right direction, prioritizing activities that are healthy for the body and the planet.
Thank you. I've got some written comments from people here, but I do have some people online as well. Chad, who would you like to go to first online? All right, Sue, go ahead.
Hello there. Uh, thank you for those who've taken the time to understand our questions and are interested in answers, and thanks to those who've worked in good faith to provide information. At previous city meetings, staff has said the impetus for road elements are based on the final design of Lacy Road between City Hall and South Sine. However, nowhere in that stretch is there both a multi-use path plus a sidewalk. How do pedestrians cross the road? They use sidewalks at well-designed intersections. At the intersections of Lacy and Sunflower Drive at McGaw Park, the Swan Creek neighborhood is to the north where all the homes orient inward. Their backyards orient to Lacy, so there are no pedestrians exiting front doors to begin a Lacy Road stroll mid-block. Internal streets and sidewalks take pedestrians and cyclists to Sunflower Drive and onto the intersection with Lacy Road. There at the crosswalks at both sides, people safely cross the street to access the multi-use path. Most bicyclists also use the multi-use path. Further west, at the roundabout of Lacy and Betty Glen, again, there are two crosswalks, and people use them without incident. What I've just described about East Lacy is a mirror of what one could expect with future development of West Lacy Road. With south-side sidewalks eliminated, not deferred, on the south side, life can go on as smoothly there as it does on East Lacy. Again, no homes with Lacy Road front edge, all homes oriented to internal streets and sidewalks, which lead to safe intersection crosswalks, um, to use a north-side multi-use path. Another benefit to eliminating the south-side sidewalk is the absence of a crosswalk for it going across Seminole Highway. With all the foot and cycle traffic previously directed to one north-side multi-use path, there is one crosswalk over Seminole Highway to continue on to the school. Conversely, two crosswalks, one north and one south of the intersection, may contribute to confusion and accidents as Seminole Highway will be quite busy. Does the current staff proposal mean the next design phase will continue a south-side sidewalk on Lacy to the fire department? Do we need a sidewalk fronting the solar panel farm? If you're concerned about unanswered questions, financial overruns, outsized footprint, environmental costs, a good start is to permanently eliminate the south-side sidewalk. Finally, I hope the council realizes that the quest for safety has also always been in mind as we've tried to engage in the process. I don't believe the amount of money proposed to be spent here is required for a safe project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who else do you have online?
Jay Haub.
All right, Jay, go ahead, Jay.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to appear tonight and offer a couple of comments. Um, the, um... One of the first things I think that comes to mind is that this has been a, um, an orderly process in that the public has had an opportunity to participate. Um, I think it's unfortunate that some people who appeared before me have chosen to get their flamethrower out and pointed at people who have in good faith tried to, uh, engage in a process to improve a six-million-dollar project. And, uh, I, I can assure everybody I'm an avid, avid biker, and I like biking, and I wish that there was, uh, more time available to try to optimize this project so that the footprint was reduced and the cost was reduced, and people could be, uh, comfortable from all perspectives about this project. That apparently is not going to happen tonight, uh, but that's okay because life goes on. There will be another step in this process, and there'll be an opportunity to reconsider some of this and also think about other ways to approach it. And I appreciate Sue's remarks about the possibilities of eliminating the sidewalk. Um, I would like to point out one other aspect of this project that's been somewhat downplayed so far, but I think everybody needs to be aware of it, and that is a lot of the work the city is doing, um, the expense of that could either be recovered by a special assessment, uh, instead of having the TID pay for it, because if the TID winds up with surplus money, it's refunded back to the taxing districts that contributed that money, and that in turn lowers taxes for everybody who paid that money in. And I raise this because, again, this is a six-million-dollar project right now. It could become more, but when you look at what the impact of this footprint is, it's actually improving adjacent property. And there typically, or not always, but sometimes those expenses are recovered from the fronting property owners. And I hope the city takes a careful look at that because it was raised at the Board of Public Works meeting a week ago, and I think it applies to this project as well. So I want to thank everybody for spending time answering questions that were offered in good faith. And I hope that, uh, the hundred people who signed the petition expressing concern about this footprint and this cost, uh, will be satisfied with the final product when, uh, it's completed in a year and a half from now. So with that, I'll sign off and thank you again for listening to our concerns and our suggestions over the course of the past three months.
Thank you, Jay. Other people chat online? All right, and then we have a couple of people who dropped off written comments tonight here. Uh, Daryl Jordan from Madison, uh, registering in support of safe streets. Uh, increasing development in Fitchburg requires safe east-west roads and streets for autos, bikes, and pedestrians. Four-foot bike lanes, two-foot painted buffer, ten-foot travel lanes, and a ten-foot multi-use path allows safe and efficient movement of, for all residential, commercial, and recreational users. Uh, Andrew Lucas from Fitchburg, registering in support. Uh, Andrew Potts from Fitchburg, registering in support. Please approve the typical section for Lacy Road with bike lanes and a ten-to-twelve-foot multi-use path. This area of the city is seeing growth and will continue to see growth under the comprehensive plans for future urban development area guidelines. And then we also had, uh, a number of emails that were sent to the council, and everyone in council saw, and then, you know, with these, since there are so many, I really just read the people and where they're from. It falls into two buckets, much like you've seen tonight. The first one is people who want the, kind of, what they're calling the safer, uh, road for bikers with the, um, the shoulder, the painted buffer, and things like that. So the people in that bucket of, uh, we have Mark Hamilton from Fitchburg, Elise Coolyard from Madison, Lee Jones from Fitchburg, Chad Faber from Fitchburg, Wes Slaymaker from Madison, Vince Perpuro from Verona, Kay Lum from Fitchburg, Mike Clark, and I'm not sure where he's from, Mike Grady from Fitchburg, Ken Walz from Menona, Harry Lum from Fitchburg, Judith Stadler from Fitchburg, Jerry Lynch from Madison, Sarah Gillett from Madison, Nancy Wiegand, and I'm not sure where she's from, Nate Detra, I'm not sure where he is from, William Newman and Diane Mertens from Fitchburg, Kristen Cooper from Madison, Thomas McElpine from Fitchburg, and Ben Nared from Madison. And then we have the second bucket of people who, you know, either want us to delay it, uh, want to have kind of the, the smaller street. Um, I think mainly, uh, delay it at this point in time. And we have Maura Boudry from Fitchburg, Sue Chapman from Fitchburg, Krista Schmidt from Fitchburg, Mary Power from Fitchburg, Tom Pukner from Fitchburg, Kathy Dudgeon from Fitchburg, Robert Tweed from Fitchburg, Terrell Brock from Fitchburg, and Thomas Kuchenbecker from Fitchburg. And that's all the public comment I have, and so we can now go into council comments and questions, things like that. And I think I've got Dave, Jay, Gabriella, Giulia. All right, Jim. All right, Dave, you are, go.
I'll start. Um, those of you who don't know me, I'm Dave Herbst. I'm the chairman of the Board of Public Works. I've been on Public Works for twenty-eight years. Uh, when I first got on, and I lived in Fitchburg for thirty-four. First moved here, we had no dedicated bike paths. I would tell you, I'm very proud to say. tell you, I'm very proud to say I've been involved with the review, design, approval of every bike path we have in Fitchburg. You won't find a bigger bike supporter than I am, but also I'm a realist. You know, I've been riding bikes since I was really tall enough to walk, and I lived in the country, and we had to ride. We were three miles out of town, so to play Little League, go swimming, we had to ride on a state highway, three miles, logging trucks, everything, you know, and somehow I managed to survive. Me and all five siblings managed to survive to adulthood. What we have in Fitchburg is much safer than what I grew up, and I would not advocate that for anyone. But, having reviewed this, I have four criteria that have shaped my decision on this. One is capacity. Is this road built with enough capacity for the vehicular traffic to start with, you know? And yes, it does. This, the two 10-foot lanes we proposed. Second is safety. A four-foot bike lane or a four-foot paved shoulder, another foot on the curb and gutter is safe. I see many of you ride down Seminole Highway, and this is better than what Seminole Highway is, and no one, I'm not hearing people complain about Seminole Highway. Second, we talked about safety. I'm proposing an eight-foot pit path. Capital City Trail has many hills. You drive along John Nolan Drive. There is no place in the county, maybe in the country, where there are more people using a multi-use path at the same time, and they're not running into each other. It's not, it's, you know, you have to slow down a little. It's not unsafe. But there are hills on Capital City Trail, Badger State, you know, there's hills, and we manage to, manage to coexist, bikers and others. The third criteria was cost. I can't deny, you know, gotta have adults in the room here. I think you're all aware of what's the tsunami coming with, with Town of Madison, and there's no more low-hanging fruit that you say, oh, we'll cut this or cut this. If I can get a road that is adequate, safe, and lower the cost, and then lower the environmental footprint, I am, I am for that. I feel 10-foot lane, four-foot paved shoulder with curb and gutter, and eight-foot pit path checks all of those boxes and respects the environment and our, and our taxpayers, and I believe this plan gives something to everyone. There were comments before, we need 34 feet for three cars to pass. That's not true. I talked to the city engineers and engineers and other firms, and they said, they said we could do it with the, with the 28-foot width and the shoulders. The comment was made, I need to follow that plan that was put in 2017. Well, I didn't write that plan. I didn't approve it, and the voters didn't necessarily say, Dave Herbst, you have to follow that plan. That's what we have elected officials for. And third, you know, this, what I'm proposing is safe. We saw a video of you guys riding on that road. I ride that probably 100 times a year. I don't like it, but I ride it. It's a, it's a road I take. There's no comparison from what you showed me on that path to what we're going to have when we're done. So, I, I'm not sure I saw the point in it. We're going to have a, this will give you a safe design that compromises very little for, for anyone, and I feel should be, should be moved forward. I'll also say, I would prefer only to have lights at the intersections, and no sidewalk on the South Side. That's not needed. There will be no properties moving out onto the, no driveways coming out onto the, onto Lacy Road. It's all internal. Having the sidewalk on the South Side is not needed, and I'd like to see that removed. Only way I could see that is if we had a special assessment for the South properties to pay for it. Thank you.
All right, Jay.
Gabriella, I just want to clarify, so everybody knows what the motion on the floor is right now. So, the motion on the floor, as I understand it, is according to the, the resolution sheet in the packet.
Yes.
Which has the two-foot, the two-foot curb and gutter with the one-foot gutter head, one-foot gutter pan, the five-foot bike lanes, which is four feet of additional pavement to the one-foot gutter pan, two 10-foot travel lanes, the seven-foot terrace on each side, and a 10 to 12-foot shared use path on the North Side, and the grading for the future sidewalk on the South Side. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, I was just following the, the text in the resolution, and that's, that's, that matches it.
All right. I would like to offer an amendment. I would like to amend this to include the two-foot buffer between the bike lanes and the 10-foot travel lanes to specify that the multi-use path will be 10 feet and to delete the South Side grading. So, that is my amendment.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, hold on a second. So, I was thinking about Joe. All right, so...
Can I just clarify what, what the grading?
So, yeah, let's see here. So, no South Side grading. So, are you saying no grading for the sidewalk?
No grading for the sidewalk.
Okay.
I mean, there will obviously be some grading required to build the road, but...
Okay.
So, if I could address my amendment.
Sure.
I think that it, I, I don't have a problem going from 11-foot travel lanes to 10-foot travel lanes. I think that's fine. I think it will serve as traffic calming and will do some other things. But I think it's silly to put a 10-foot travel lane right next to a five-foot bike lane, especially in an area where there's as much truck traffic as there's going to be. This is a safety issue, and, you know, as we heard from the Public Works Director at our, at two meetings ago, we're expecting 11, 12, 13,000 cars per day on this section of road. And that's a, that's a, that's a lot when you're, and when you're trying to deal with the bicycles that are also coming down the road. And I, I think the point, the, a very valid point is that the bicycles that are people who are commuting are going to be traveling at a significantly different speed than people walking their dogs and doing other things. So, I do think it's, I also think it's important to have the 10-foot, the 10-foot multi-use path, which is what we've used everywhere else in the city of Fitchburg. This is our standard. This is what we build. And an eight-foot, an eight-foot lane is, an eight-foot pavement is difficult if you're passing another bicycle. I mean, I've tried to do it on a narrower path, and it's, it's challenging. So, I think the incremental cost is pretty minimal for that, and it's obviously in the, in what's already been budgeted for this plan, as far as the South sidewalk, the grading for the South sidewalk, half, about a third of that length of Lacy Road isn't even in, the South Side isn't even in our future urban development plan, which goes out 50 years. So, it's going to be at least 50 years before there's anything over there to use the sidewalk. I just don't see, I don't see the reason to do anything for it, and as has been mentioned by a few people tonight, I don't know, something important. I can't remember anymore. But we'll move on, and that was, that was my comment on my amendment.
All right. We're talking, we're talking about the amendment now. I still have my list from before. Gabriella, I don't know if you want to speak now, or you want to wait. It's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak now, if that's okay.
Yep.
I just have a couple pieces of information. So, in Transportation and Transit, our Transportation engineer, Andrew McFadden, came and gave some information, and I just feel like I want some of that information out here in the discussion. First one is, and Andrew, please, please confirm this if you can. He said that the difference between the narrowest cross-section and the widest possible cross-section, which I believe what we're talking about is like 30 to 34 feet, is, is 20 trees lost. That's the, that's the difference based on the expanded tree survey. I think that's a really important piece of information because I personally value trees very highly, but when we're talking about 20 trees and potentially the difference between those widths of the roads indicates a different level of safety, I think that's important to, like, know the number. So, can you confirm that, Andrew, that that's, that that's accurate?
Yeah, and I could, I could share my screen if that's helpful with the two grading limits to demonstrate that, if you'd like.
Sure, yeah.
I just always feel like a visual helps. So, you know, this was included in the packet, and, and so, I guess the, the two lines that you see here, specifically in the core area where we kind of have the most density of trees, shows in green kind of what that, that minimal 28-foot cross-section would be, and in orange, kind of what our February 17th original design was, that kind of widest cross-section. And so, you can see, it's relatively small, and we're talking about something like 10 to 30 feet, you know, and so what we did was we basically, using the tree survey that we, that we got from, got three different tree surveys, we were able to kind of count what the differential between those two grading limits would be. That's the, you know, ultimately 20 to 25 trees that Gabriella mentioned. So, yep, and that's really the kind of the, you know, without retaining wall, without any, any other kind of measure to reduce grading, which is kind of straight grading of the hillside, knowing, you know, three to one slope on the, on the South Side of the roadway, and two and a half to one slope on the North Side, we're really talking about 20 to 25 trees. And so, yep.
Okay. And then, can I, can I keep going with some question? Okay. So, the, we'd also discussed the retaining wall at Transportation and Transit, and let me just, I don't think we, I don't want to discuss that right now, but I'm just saying that you are looking at those options, and that's something that we could consider even after we approve this cross-section. Is that correct?
Yeah, definitely, yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we, we can...
It's just kind of over this one stretch, so it's certainly not something typical over the whole corridor.
Okay. And then, another thing, what is the width of Lacy Road just on the other side of Seminole Highway?
Currently, I believe it's something like 32 to 34 feet.
Okay. So, that would match with what the amended version that we're talking about is, just for, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is that the multi-use path, you did look into options for permeable pavement that we could use potentially on the flat areas. It's not useful on hills, but that's something that you've looked into, and it's a possibility in terms of if we have a 10-foot multi-use path on those flat areas, potentially we could create permeable surface so that we're not creating as much runoff. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct, and we have one out there right now, adjacent to Cory Vista, so it would be consistent with the area.
Awesome, thanks.
All right, Julia, do you want to speak now or later?
Yeah, so I want to ask a question to Jay first.
Sure.
So, your amendment includes the two-foot buffers?
Correct.
Yes. And you take out the grading?
Yes.
But you keep the seven-foot terraces on the North and South Side?
This amendment, I'm, I'm not married to the terrace on the South Side. You can, you can add that in if you want to delete it. I don't care.
I, well, I have, can I go with some, and then we can, can give the opportunity to other?
Just to clarify, the only reason I didn't include that is because the terrace is where we're going to be planting trees to replace the ones we're taking down.
Okay, fine. So, so I went to Memory Lane, and I went to, and I read the 2017 Bike and Pedestrian Plan, and I found very interesting things. So, the first one, it was, we talked about this Lacy Road in 2017. It was one of the upcoming capital improvement projects in that project, in, in, in the 2017 was Lacy Road, okay? Will be reconstructed west of Seminole Highway with the improved bicycle and pedestrian facility. It's here, on page 40. Then, one of the key themes that people have concern that they took from neighbors when they developed this plan, that it was developed with input of everyone, and also by engineers too. So, one of the corridors, it was, that raised the most safety concern, and one other one was Lacy Road. So, and then, if you go to page 44, it talks about why it's important, the bicycle lane and the buffer bicycle lanes in this type of corridor. And then, it mentioned in Appendix 86, why this type of corridor or urban road, what are the design requirements that they should have. And the requirements are the one practically that came in the resolution, plus the buffer bike lanes. So, all of this information that the city, we, I approved this plan in 2017 because I was a council. I want to follow this. I want to follow because I also believe that, you know, that this road deserved the best. We are, we are reconstructing the road for the 50 next year. So, is, you make some comment about that, Dave, that, so we have to give this plan to everyone, like, you know, we know. We had to give this plan to the resident feature with the most measurement requirement and all the, all the element that the design need to have for this type of road because we are developing it for 50 year to come. So, and this is how we are approaching to this project. This is a road that is going to be an urban road, and it's going to be an urban road in the next, urban road in the next two, three years. We have all the development that is coming in that area. Also, one is important that when you have a lot of truck, traffic, you need to have buffer bike lanes, and we are going to have a lot of traffic with trucks from Pro Omega Manufacturing Company that is going to open soon, and all the quarry. And who knows, is another quarry is coming to the, that area. So, so I want, I want to vote, and I want to approve the design of a road that is going to have most of, you know, every thing that is in the resolution, plus what the amendment that Jay put on the table. My other concern is the grading, okay, especially in the quarry area, because, you know, where the new Paint and Dolan lot is, I think the scope there is, is very deep, and I, I am concerned about that. If we are going to do this, we should do it correctly, and I think we should keep some of the grading, especially in the area that they are more dangerous. And I am not a biker of this road, but I have driven this road. I have driven, driven that road many, many times with my kid to take into their own activities. So, I know how dangerous is this road. It's becoming with all the traffic that is coming. So, the only thing that I'm going to add to the amendment is to keep, or put another amendment to, to keep the grading because it's important, or at least to maintain the grading in the area where it's more dangerous, or to add the, what is the other protection that you put there, the guardrail, if we are not going to do the grading. I, I can go, I can be flexible in those, you know, but we need to have some protection, especially in the area that is in front of the quarry. This is for now.
I just want to clarify. So, there is grading that's done on both sides, actually, with still, and it's, this, the five-foot of grading that was taken out is for where the sidewalk would be. And so, there is grading that's happening anyway. It's the five-foot of grading for future sidewalk on the South Side. So, essentially saying, when that gets developed, any of that grading will be done, along with putting in the sidewalk by the developer. So, there is grading that is happening.
Okay, okay, okay. I want to, okay, so fine. Yeah, I am fine with the sidewalk grading if we, you know, I am not, you know, it's not going to compromise my vote on that, okay.
All right. I've got Jim, and then Dave after that. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, this is, has been an interesting process, to say the least. When you look at the manuals that people use to design roads, it's a lot of thought that goes into it. People who have decades of experience designing roads, always looking at how to improve roads, how to make it safer for everyone, and they do come up with measurements. And the measurements that I saw for the road initially, that was like, yeah, you know, this is what is needed. But then, you know, people say, well, we got to reduce the footprint. Well, each time you reduce the footprint, you're reducing safety to be the bottom line. And, you know, it was reduced once, and then, you know, now... And, you know, it was reduced once, and then, you know, now back again, you know, I saw the emails, people want to reduce it again, and it's like, what foundation are people coming up with these numbers? I mean, when you look at the manuals, and you look at the technical specs that go into it, is line of sight, human factors, reaction time, and everything else that people are figuring, figuring out. And it's all to make it safe. And one of the things, I'll admit, that I messed up on is that 10-foot multi-use path. The documents say that it should be 10 feet, and it should be 10 feet, because you have a multi-use path, and you want everybody to use it. And that includes bikers, rollerbladers, people walking their dogs, people pushing strollers. And actually, you know, when you look at ADA requirements, now, this isn't for this road, because we're not getting federal estate funds, but you got to consider people in wheelchairs also. And you saw the gentleman coming in with a walker, you know, he needs to use the path too. And actually, this weekend, I went out bike riding, and also driving around my car with a tape measure, and when I was on a Capital City Trail, I'm going one way, another bicyclist coming another way, and there is a mother pushing a stroller. Now, we could say, oh, yes, slow down, and everything else like that, but that's just three of us on that trail. And I understand what they're saying about John Nolan Drive, but you got to look at the demographics. You know, on John Nolan Drive, you don't see people walking their dogs with their families, with kids tagging along, and everything else. And again, what the manual says is at least 10 feet. There should be rare circumstances when you go below that. And in fact, depending on the use of the road, or the path, it could be 12 to 14 feet. And then, another thing that I saw while I was out walking the path, and looking around, and everything else like that, I was across the street from McGaw Park, and here comes a couple. One was riding, or riding in a recumbent bike, and the other was on a two-wheel bike. Now, now, we're talking about additional width, and that's probably what you're going to see more of. So, the safety issue, you know, just keep going down, and down, and down, we just keep taking away safety. And I said it once before, and I'll say it again, because I carry it around with me, is that I've seen bodies on an autopsy table as a result of an accident. I've seen a baby extracted from a vehicle because of a traffic accident. It's not pleasant, that some of this stuff that I carry around, that images are in my head, while we keep talking about, let's keep reducing these safety factors. And now, we're talking about a bike, you know, I wasn't all for the buffer lanes at first, but again, I don't know if I, what I would do, me personally, if somebody got hurt because their body went up against a 4,500-pound car, and they died, because now I have a hand in that. So, I'm all for safety, and I think that should be our top priority, and as a government entity, we should be making our citizens as safe as possible. I like the environment too. I really do. I like being in the country. I like looking at trees. I like the smells of farms and everything else. But I think we really, really got to pay attention to safety. And even when you're looking at cost, and I hope Misty helps me out on this, but just for the part that we're going to be taking out a loan on, 1.7 million, that's listed in the CIP, borrowed over 20 years with a 2% interest rate, the payment, interest payments based on the 2020 tax roll on the average home, you know, we're going to be paying $10.66. That's what we're going to be paying. You know, and I, you know, turn into Misty, because we talked about the TID and the millions of dollars that the city is just paying for this. And Misty and I had some conversations, and I'll let you take that over, Misty, if you don't mind, while we talk about the TID.
Go ahead, Misty.
Yeah, so, we have TID 9 in that area, which is the corner of Seminole and Lacy, and the big projects that are in there is the Sub-Zero Expansion, which is currently there, the new design facility that's under construction now, and then the Pro Mega Building, Race Day, and Hop House. The TID can pay for part of this road that is determined to be to the benefit of those properties. So, that's an engineering estimate that Andrew has been working on, to, you know, figure out what that allocation is. But because of those big buildings that are in there, the TID can pick up a big chunk of what this project is. And yes, there is that risk. If the TID doesn't pay off, there is a deficit that the city will have to make up. But at this point, because this is that, one of the highest priority projects, and we're delaying some other ones, I don't expect that to be a problem 15 years from now when that TID closes.
Can I?
Yeah, keep going.
Can I just finish it? And I just would end up, you know, when we talk about finances, if you look on the website, there's a lot of reports on the finances of this city, the finances of the TIDS, there's audits, and if you're really concerned about, you know, the finances of the city, in fact, we just went through an audit with the auditor today in finance, and we're in very good shape. And if you have some concerns, I would invite people to go to those documents and just look, get the information, get real information, and not just information that you hear on the street, or what somebody else says, because I think it's important that everybody has the right information, and the information that comes from sources that are, basically, they can back up what they say. Thanks.
All right. I've got Dave, Julia, Joe, Gabriella.
I think we need to point out that this road, we are making it safer. We're cutting down the hill, we're eliminating the curves, some of the most unsafe portions of that, we're taking care of that right now. I, you know, I disagree, you know, with many of my council members, that this isn't safe as designed. If you don't feel safe on the road, go on the ped path. The ped path is safe, and, you know, to our constituents, you know, in the room here, I know you all ride to Paoli all the time, as I do, you got no, you got no shoulders, you got nothing down there, you know, you're logging hundreds of miles, maybe thousands of miles to Paoli back in every year. It's not, obviously, it's not as heavily traffic, but I feel this is a safe, safe design. If you're not, don't feel safe on the road, move over onto the ped path. There's plenty of room, even at, even at eight feet, and I'm on those ped paths as much as anyone, either with my dogs, myself, walking, you know, we have plenty of eight-foot ped paths, and, you know, they're safe. We haven't had, we haven't had large amount of, any accidents that I'm aware of, except, you know, maybe someone getting out of control, maybe going down from the tennis courts down to the bottom of the Capital City, but other than that.
All right. Julia, and then Joe after that, and Gabriella, and then Randy.
Yeah, so I forgot to mention before that, also, in the 2017 Bike and Pedestrian Plan, in the Appendix 8, page 2, there is a facility design and selection table in the Infrastructure Toolkit, and there are two tables. Those tables were designed by, the following bikeways design selection table, were developed using a combination of reference with best practices, standard, presented by the Minnesota Department of Transportation, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, the NACTO, and the AAHTO, as well as directed guidance from the City of Fitchville Public War Department. In the table, that I would like all of you to take and reference, is Table 2, talk about the white ways design selection for urban cross-section. And it mentioned that in a road with 35 to 40 miles per hour, that this is the road, the speed, with around 5,000 to 10,000 vehicles, it should have a four-foot bike lane, plus two buffer, two-foot buffer lanes, and a protected bicycle lane. So, so, you see the plan, you know, so, and I am concerned that the engineer firm is going to sign, if we, if we go with a substandard design, if they're going to be able to sign that as an engineer. So, we can have another problem, because we can say, no, Fitchville, you know, we are not going to sign with the council approval, because it's substandard design, it's not safe. So, and I want to tell you to my fellow alder and everyone watching is, what is the price of safety? What is the price? We can put a price of safety? No. So, I want to, I want a design that is, it have all the safety tools and element that we can put here, because if something happen, we are going to be not liable, but it's going to be in our conscience. Thank you.
Joe?
Sure. So, a lot of other alders covered things that I was thinking about, but I just want to add a few pieces. I mentioned at the last meeting that we talked, asking sort of what this area is going to look like in 10 years, and I really think we need to think about that as we move forward. I went to the opening of Race Day events, after the renovation, the ribbon cutting, and, I mean, the facility is beautiful, and it, it will be a draw for tourism, it will be a draw for events within the city, both formal and informal. You're going to have, you know, possible apartments, you know, more residents living there, you're also going to have more employees living there who may want to commute, and I have ridden this road a lot, and when we're thinking about who needs to bike, we also need to keep in mind who biking is accessible to. So, when we think about communities that are bike-friendly, countries that are bike-friendly, cities that are bike-friendly, we not only need to think about people like myself, able-bodied, you know, men in their 20s, 30s, 40s, but we also have to think about who would the threshold increase to if we were to make this more accessible? So, me, as somebody who bikes 100 miles a week, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take the same risk that Steven Thad take, I'm going to go down to Paoli, I'm going to be okay. But if I'm riding with my daughter, riding with my wife, I'm riding with my nephews and nieces, who ride less, or, you know, are going to be more, less, more trepidate, trepidant, whatever the word is, to, they're going to have more trepidation to be able to get on the road, you're preventing the possibility of this road really being used as a thoroughfare, not only for everyday life, but also for events that bring commerce into this community. So, I really need to think about that, and I'm speaking as a member of the Bike Committee. This also came to me from the Chair, Mark Hamilton, who noted a stat that I think we, biking brings about $1.4 billion into this economy, and Fishburg is really one of the centralized places that people think about when they think of, of that draw. So, you know, if we make this road unsafe, I think we're, in some ways, not living up to the potential that we could be, not only for residents of this city, but also people who are going to bring, you know, money, as well as just a good feeling of what this city is and should be. I'll also say that, I'm going to, I'm going to stop there, I might have more to add later, but I really just, we need to take this from an equity lens, because when you're, when you have this multi-use path, where bikers are going to, you know, who ride at higher speeds, or a little bit more advanced, are using this multipath, that puts the other people that are walking, that are riding more slowly, at risk, because they're going to have to share the road with the, you know, the folks that ride fast, and that can be a disaster. I've seen it. I broke my clavicle a couple months ago, so I really intimately understand the importance of having different options for different types of bikers and pedestrians.
I've got Gabriella, and then Randy, and then Jim.
So, I won't belabor the point of safety, because I think it's been covered a lot, but I do want to just highlight a point that's in the memo that hasn't really been brought up, but there's a higher percentage of trucks on this road, like, normal truck traffic on roads like this are 2%, this road, it's 6%. And like, when I think about a potential accident with like, a biker and a vehicle, it's going to be a truck and a biker, it's not going to be the car and the biker, which is why I think buffered bike lanes, like, I'm leaning towards that's the right way to go, because, I don't know, there was a fatality over the weekend on Fish Hatchery Road, which is not the same, but like, I got that notification on my phone, and ever since then, I've been thinking about, like, oh, my God, like, if I approve this without buffered bike lanes, and someone dies on this road because a truck hits them while they're biking, I will never, ever, ever be able to forgive myself for that. And like, that's all I can be, that has really been in my head a lot, and that's why it's like, the cost, you're basically adding two feet of road, because the staff wanted to add one foot of thoroughfare for the road anyway, so we're talking about like, adding two feet total to the road, which like, cost-wise is not going to be that much more, tree-wise is 20 trees, and like, that, in my mind, is worth potentially saving someone's life over and over again. So, that's on that one. Second one, I do think that there has been important conversation about the importance of trees, that's been brought up in these conversations, which is great, because I love that we have a bike and pedestrian plan, and we don't really have enough of a plan about how we protect trees. So, for those of you that are passionate about that, I encourage you to keep an eye on the Tree Advisory Committee, we're working on a tree protection ordinance, which would be a good, like, actual document to help direct things, decisions like this in the future. So, if you care about this, think about following that, and I'm happy to give you more information if you want that. And then, the last thing is about the grading on the south side for the sidewalk, and I was hoping Andrew could answer this. My understanding, based on the Transportation and Transit Committee meeting, so people might have this number in their head, but my, my note said that that extra grading, five feet of grading for sidewalk on the south side, was a total of $80,000. Is that correct, Andrew?
Yeah, so, we did, we separated out the grading for the terrace, which would be seven feet, and the grading for sidewalk, which would be something like five to six, depending upon what options we have. And, and that's the correct number that you're citing for the sidewalk.
Okay. So, that additional grading is about $80,000, which like, in a project of this size is relatively minimal, in my mind. People might disagree with me, but that's, that's what I was thinking. Does that extra grading improve the safety of the road? Andrew?
I mean, it, I would say, like, most of these things, the extra width, put to good use, would provide kind of an extra measure, extra factor of safety in that clear zone of level landing for the, you know, the unlikely, but certainly possible, over the next 30 years, errant vehicle going off the side of the road, they'll have a place, basically, to, to stop before getting to that, that three-to-one slope, or that steeper slope. So, yes, in that way, it definitely adds kind of extra clear zone space, that's level.
So, I've not made my mind up about that, but I just wanted to bring that up. Cost is basically $80,000, potentially improves safety. Something to think about.
Randy, go ahead.
I'm not sure if I can add anything further. My fellow alders have, have covered a number of important topics, and safety's at the top of my list, comprehensive plans at the top of my list. The comprehensive plan was issued as a guide, maybe it goes further than that, and I believe that we need to adhere to it. It was, it was crafted, drafted for a purpose, and that's, holds true with the 2017 Bike and Ped as well. In my own profession, as an, professional career as an engineer, I don't know if there was ever a time that somebody approached me and said not to follow the guidelines. That case may be a little different, somebody did bring up about the liability, and I certainly could see that coming back to us as well. But I think what's more important is, that Gabriella brought up, is the loss of a life if we do not adhere to some of the safety concerns, the two-foot buffer. Initially, I was in favor of taking away the two-foot buffer. I had this conversation with the mayor, conversation with committee members outside of this group, the neighborhood community, but as I did more additional reading, there's a purpose for that two-foot buffer. And driving on a road where there is a two-foot buffer, and there's a bicyclist next to you, it actually gives you some assurance that there won't be some type of collision from side to side. And given that location with dump trucks, additional large trucks, that two-foot buffer is needed. And as far as growth to the community, I think we're all aware of it by this point- And as far as growth to the community, I think we're all aware of it by this point in time, that Payne and Dolan plans to develop. There's some other, Yara Minerals, maybe a subdivision there, maybe they will quarry, who knows at this point. Edgewood, they've expressed an interest. So we all know that that will be developing fairly, fairly quickly. So I haven't heard it yet, but I'm going to support this amendment. Thank you.
Jim, go ahead.
Well, I want to compliment Joe because he expressed my thoughts very eloquently about this bike path is for everyone. It's just not for the bike people in here who can ride, you know, have very high riding skills. It's for everyone, no matter what your skill is. Thank you, Joe.
All right, Jay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one last comment on this, about the buffers. Just because I don't know, I just looked up the width of a typical dump truck, which is eight and a half feet. So in a 10-foot travel lane, that gives you nine inches on either side between the lines of that lane. And, you know, I drive a car that is not eight and a half feet wide, but I bet in the traveling of a mile and a half, my car moves more than nine inches between the center line. It just, we're not machines. We can't drive that precisely. And then you think about that truck has rearview mirrors that stick out from the side of it. And that's going to encroach, that, that's, those mirrors may very well encroach into the buffers. So I really, I, I just can't imagine approving a project like this without the two-foot buffers. It just seems, it seems to make no logical sense at all.
All right, ready for some vote up? Go ahead, Joe, and then Dave.
Yeah, just for everybody watching, I do also encourage you to look up the standards for becoming a gold status bicycle city. Fischburg is silver right now. So that's one of the things that the Bicycle Committee is pursuing. And while I don't have it in my head or in front of me, one aspect of that, to Jim's point, is equity. So making sure that all different types of riders can be accommodated. So, you know, by following this plan, we are we're helping us get to that status. It seems like something that's minor, but I think it also, you know, has the potential to bring a certain level of notoriety to the table because there are so few cities in the United States that are at that level that by us having that status, you know, again, it, I know everybody's talking about safety. I'm also talking about our economic impact. That, that makes us look really good. And it, you know, potentially draws resources to this city.
Dave?
Don't lose fact that it's a 35 mile an hour road. It's 45. Our speed is being lowered to 35. Okay, this isn't a high-speed conduit. And, you know, the safety, everyone's pointing at me and says, Perps doesn't care about safety. Let me tell you something. You know, I am electrical worker. I'm around things that want to kill me every day. And in almost 40 years, no one that's worked for me has ever gotten hurt. So I'm well aware of, of safety and risks. And, and you have, you know, you have assessed risks. And I think everyone that I see out here could ride on that four-foot paved shoulder. And people that aren't, you know, aren't as comfortable would be over on the bike ped path. If you'd ask our residents, and Joe, I think on your side, they would say, bike safety, we're more concerned about not having all our bikes stolen out of our garage than we are getting hit by a car, you know, out on that, out on that road. So I'm still, this is, you know, what I'm proposing is still a safe design, adequate, and cost effective. Thank you.
Ready for some voting? All right. First is voting on the amendment. So Jay's amendment is to add the 10-foot buffer on each side. Sorry, two-foot buffer.
Don't make it 10 feet.
Sorry, sorry. It's gonna be really safe. Sorry. Read the wrong thing there. The 10-foot path the entire way, instead of 10 to 12. And then no grading for the sidewalk on the south side. So that's kind of what we're at for the amendment. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, nay?
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it. So now we're on the main motion. I don't think there's any, Jay?
I just want to make one quick comment. And it was in response to something that one of the speakers said today. We have, we have a lot of people in our city staff, and their job is to work for the taxpayers. Their job is to answer questions when people have them. And we sit up here, and yeah, we got a lot, we got a boatload of emails on this issue. Emails on both sides. But that's our job. That's our job as elected representatives, is to hear what the people have to say. So I just wanted to step up and say, you know, our staff does a great job of answering resident questions. That's what they're there to do. And I appreciate that there are residents, even if I don't end up agreeing with them, I appreciate that there are residents who, who will take the initiative and ask those questions and be involved in what's going on in their city. You know, so many times we've had important issues, and we, we talk about these things to an empty room. But, you know, we have people here tonight, we have people online watching, and people who have contacted us through email, people who have called us. I just, I just directed someone yesterday to a city staff person on a completely different issue. And that's what they're there for. They're the experts. These people have the knowledge to answer the questions correctly. So I don't want residents to feel like they cannot call City Hall because they're gonna get scolded for it. This is, this is what City Hall is here for.
All right, see nothing else. We will now vote on the main motion as amended. All in favor of Resolution R 6121 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, nay?
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it. All right, thank you, everyone. We'll go back to the regular agenda order now for Plan Commission. All right, Randy, you are up.
Hang on here. Okay. Plan Commission. First item is Ordinance 2021-0-10, RZ-2380-21, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezone request, RZ-2380-21 by Serena Davis, agent for Fischburg Technology Campus LLC to rezone from the D, excuse me, PDD dash GIP, Plan Development District, General Implementation Plan, District to the B dash P, Business Professional District, to allow for rehabilitation hospital use on property along Nobel Drive, lots 25 and 26, Fischburg Technology Campus First Edition.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Did Plan Commission approve?
Planning Commission approved.
All right. Do you want to speak to this, or do you want the applicant to speak to this? We have Serena here. Serena, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen now. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Serena Davis. I am the National Director of Real Estate within Compass Health Corporation. With me tonight is Troy Decker, our Regional President, Melanie Lewis, our Vice President of Development, Rodney Goldcrest, Director of Design and Construction. And representing Encompass, we have Travis Parker, Architect with ESA, and Spencer Christiansen, Civil Engineer with Veer Becker. For any of you who is not familiar with Encompass Health, I would like to share a quick summary of our operations, followed by a brief overview of the project that we are proposing. Encompass Health is the nation's largest provider of inpatient rehabilitation services. We operate 139 inpatient rehabilitation hospitals across the nation. We offer post-acute care to patients who are recovering from an acute event, such as a stroke, a heart attack, a neurological event, or other debilitating illnesses. Encompass Health provides services such as physical rehabilitation, occupational therapy, and speech therapy, in an effort to assist patients to become more independent in their integration back into their everyday routine. Our patients receive 24 hours seven nursing care. They're seen by a rehabilitation physician at a minimum of three days per week. They will undergo a minimum of three hours of intensive physical rehabilitation at least five days per week. Encompass Health does not offer drug, alcohol, or mental rehabilitation. The proposed Encompass Health Rehabilitation Hospital of Fischburg will serve the community through the development of a 48,000 square foot, four-bed inpatient rehabilitation hospital, with the capacity to expand to 80 beds in the future at approximately 71,000 square feet. And all of our rooms will be private rooms. We are currently under contract to purchase 6.39 acres of land located on the southeast corner of Fish Hatchery Road and Nobel Drive, otherwise known as lots 25 and 26 of the Fischburg Technology Campus. We are targeting a groundbreaking in the second quarter of 2022, and anticipate a grand opening in the second quarter of 2023. The first phase of our project is estimated to be approximately a $30.4 million investment in the community. We are a for-profit entity, and therefore we will be subject to paying real estate taxes. Oops. Our project will offer high-paying, quality clinical jobs. We anticipate a need for approximately 91 full-time employees in year one with an average salary of approximately $75,000, increasing to 115 full-time employees by year five with an average salary of $80,000. The proposed building is a single-story structure designed to promote the best outcomes for our patients that suffer from a multitude of physical impairments. Our design and construction team has worked diligently with our operations, obtaining feedback from our clinicians and our therapists to develop a prototype that best serves our patients and their needs. Although a single-story structure was not intended for this site, we have attempted to conform with the other elements of the Fischburg Technology Campus architectural design, including the placement of the building and parking, massing on the prominent corners, and selecting high-quality exterior, exterior materials in our design. In regards to the building placement, we have justified the building to the north and to the west of the property lines along Nobel and Fish Hatchery Road to maximize the building presence along these roads and encourage a pedestrian scale and feel with all of the parking located on the side and the rear of the hospital. In regards to the massing, the northwest and northeast corners of the building are emphasized to elevate heights. So you can see on this side, this is going to be our entrance area. And this is going to be our day room. And those are both the prominent corners. In regards to the exterior building materials, we have selected a predominantly brick facade using three colors of brick masonry, red, cream, and gray, combined with metal panel accents and glazed elements such as storefront and curtain walls to complement the buildings on the adjacent properties. In the earlier stages of development, we met with the neighborhood to discuss their thoughts and concerns relating to our project. The majority of the community was concerned with traffic safety. The traffic on our site will be generally limited to hospital staff, I'm sorry, staff and visitors. Patients are transported to our hospital via transport vehicle between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on a non-emergency basis, so there will be no sirens. The average length of stay for each patient is 13 days, which leads to a significantly lower traffic impact than other land uses. Peak hours of traffic for this site are expected to be around 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., or slightly earlier than that, when the employee shift changes occur. Although we provide 24/7 nursing staff care, our operations are typically from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thereafter, there is very little activity on the site, allowing our patients to get the rest that they need for the next day's therapy session. All of our facility's parking needs will be contained within the site boundaries. There will be two ingress and egress areas, one on the northeast of the site, and one on the southeast of the site. The northeast driveway will offer a right-in, right-out access. However, signage will be posted on-site to direct the westbound traffic to the exit via Research Park Drive, where adequate queuing in this area will be available for stop sign controlled left turns out onto Fish Hatchery Road. We have worked diligently with the City of Fischburg and Fischburg Technology Campus to meet the ambiance and architectural design requirements, while also working with the neighborhood to address all of the traffic, traffic safety concerns. So with that, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, first I got some color comments. And then we'll go to council questions or comments. I have from Conrad Opitz, Madison. Please vote in approval for Encompass Health Rehabilitation Hospital use in Fischburg and the Technology Campus location. This use will be a great asset to the community of Fischburg, serving its citizens as well as Southwest Madison and Verona. Additional jobs are helpful, but this use will not bring an overwhelming traffic burden to this area. I also have Joe Reden from Fischburg, also the president of the Oak Meadow Homeowners Association. Please note this registration in support for items 7A1 and 7A3 at the May 25th Council Meeting as appropriate. The Oak Meadow neighborhood is adjacent to this proposed development just across Fish Hatchery Road. The Oak Meadow and Homeowners Association Board, on behalf of the Oak Meadow neighborhood, strongly supports the proposed rehabilitation hospital on the corner of Nobel Drive and Fish Hatchery Road. The Plan Commission meeting, Chris Armstrong pointed out that tax revenue from this development at full buildout should exceed that from the originally proposed two-four-story office buildings that produce noticeably less traffic at the Oak Meadow main entry-exit point. The proposed attractive buildings and use are compatible with our neighborhood and a good match for Fischburg. I also have Chris Armstrong from Madison, I guess, from Avante Properties. As representative of the, of the Fischburg Technology Campus, this Architectural Committee and Avante Properties are ready to express our support for the Encompass Health project and lots 25 and 26 of the Fischburg Technology Campus for the following reasons. They estimate over 90 jobs in year one of operations with an average salary of $75,000 per year. Although the project is single-story, it has two-story elements, giving it a multi-story feel. The rest demand tax increment per acre far exceeds the tax increment provided by multi-story office buildings in the campus. Traffic impacts and demand for city services are minimal. The architecture is consistent with the rest of the campus. Encompass is using brick, block, and glass, and has included architectural elements at both prominent corners of the project. In summary, this is a great project for this lot and the Fischburg Technology Campus. It will provide a healthcare amenity to Fischburg residents that is not currently offered, will provide energy to a site that has been looking for a project for nearly two decades. I encourage the Plan Commission and Council to welcome this employer as a new member of the city. All right, Randy had something, and then Jay Shannon?
My question is directed to Serena. The, had a constituent reach out. He's the owner of the adjacent property. And I believe you answered his question, and I know the city answered the question, but there was concern regarding the lighting, exterior lighting, and then also with the stormwater. Can you address those two items?
Yes, I did speak with our civil engineers, and I also spoke to the owner of the property south of us, Randy, and we did go through the lighting exhibit, and I did show him that we are dark sky compliant. And we also went through the drainage, because he was concerned that some of the drainage on the south side of the property would back up onto his property. And I'm gonna let Spencer Christiansen address the drainage issue.
Hey, everyone. Spencer Christiansen at Veer Becker, Civil Engineer. The offsite drainage for this property flows into the site from the south property line. And we are proposing to pick that up in a culvert approximately 36 And we are proposing to pick that up in a culvert approximately thirty-six inches in size to account for ten-year storm event with an available overflow route around the building if needed, if a larger storm occurs. But this drains to the city storm sewer system in the northwest corner of the property. And that drainage pattern is proposed to be maintained for this project. And so everything coming from the off-site will be directed as it sits today to the city storm sewer system. There's also going to be a proposed retaining wall along the south property line towards the southeast corner of the site. Any off-site drainage coming from the south there will be diverted around the wall to that culvert that I mentioned or to the right-of-way of Research Park Drive. So it's anticipated that all or any concerns of off-site runoff will be addressed with this proposed design. Let me know if you have any additional questions, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Jay.
I just had one question for Serena. And I, the sound quality of you coming through here isn't the greatest, so you don't have emergency facilities at this facility, so you wouldn't be having ambulances coming in. You would only have the occasional ambulance taking somebody out, is that correct?
Well, sometimes our patients are transported via ambulance or another transport vehicle, but they're on a non-emergency basis, so there's no sirens. Now, there could be an event that if somebody at our hospital was in need of emergency services, but those services would be similar to what you would have in your surrounding communities or neighborhoods.
All right, and then the only other comment I had was I had received some communications from Corey Hill about sound issues, noise issues from the commercial buildings located so closely. So they, the information about that has been added as conditions on this application, and the neighborhood seems to be pretty happy with that, and they are complying with the requirements that the other buildings in Fitchburg Tech Campus are complying with.
I got Shannon, and then Dave after that.
I just wanted to kind of, well, Jay kind of says what I was gonna say, that, you know, when we were sitting through the neighborhood meeting, they answered a lot of questions and really put, I think, put our neighbors at ease. And I think they were, they were really back in this project. So it's kind of nice to see something that might be going in that corner that fits and that our neighbors really are behind. Thank you.
All right, Dave.
A question for Spencer. If I understand it right, the stormwater facilities on this property are for a ten-year rain event, or they would handle the amount of rain from your, you know, it's a six-acre site, it's mostly impervious surface. My question is, have you talked to our city engineers, you know, about the capacity of our stormwater facilities in that area, you know, that this is a large impervious area, taking up almost the entire lot? And I'm just wondering if you've had those discussions with them, Spencer?
Yeah, so this proposed site is expected to have an impervious surface ratio of forty-eight percent. So about half the site being covered in this first phase with impervious surfaces. The existing culvert into the city storm sewer system in that northwest corner is, I believe, thirty thirty-six inches that goes into the city storm sewer system. So we wouldn't be exceeding or proposing to exceed what is currently going there right now. And as part of this project, we'll be required to apply for a stormwater management permit through the city of Fitchburg. And so we'll have to show them exactly what our proposed discharges will be to the city sewer system, and they will be approving that, reviewing and approving. So everything that's proposed to discharge to the system will be in compliance and reviewed for capacity.
Julia.
Okay, so I want to speak from the economic development perspective about this project. So this is a project that is around thirty million dollars. They are not requesting any money from the city, not if. It's gonna be around, it's gonna create around ninety jobs and an average of seventy-five thousand dollars in salary. So, and it's gonna be in a lot, this development in a lot that has been empty for more than twenty years. So I know that there are some concerns about the height of the building and all of that, but I think this is a great location for this type of building. And also I want to add that this process also is two to three times the increment per acre compared to the two or four-story office building that they are located in the area. So usually the average is two point six or three point three. This project is gonna bring like more than six percent, oh, no, sorry. An average of value of two million or one million and a half, and this project is gonna be about four point seven million dollars, so the increment per acre. So I think that from the point of view of economic development, this is a great addition to the city. We are gonna collect more taxes for our tax roll and the amount of job and the average of salary, I think this is great. So I'm gonna support this project.
All right, seeing nothing else, I will go ahead to the vote. On favor of ordinance twenty twenty-one zero ten, the rezon twenty-three eighty twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. Next one, Randy.
Motion to approve certified survey map C S dash twenty-three seventy-five dash twenty-one. Request by Amy Demchek, agent for Certco Inc. for approval of a certified survey map to combine property associated with fifty-three oh five and fifty-three twenty-one Verona Road into one lot, lots one and two, C S M fifty-nine forty-two. This is postponed from April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Randy, I believe you want to postpone this again.
Yes, you're right. You could have interrupted me earlier.
You're going strong.
Motion to postpone until June.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to postpone until June. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that was postponed. Number three.
This one was approved.
Yes.
The motion to approve Resolution R dash one-one-one dash twenty-one. C S dash twenty-three eighty-one dash twenty-one. Resolution approving certified survey map request C S dash twenty-three eighty-one dash twenty-one by Serena Davis, agent for Fitchburg Technology Campus LLC to combine two lots along Nobel Drive, lots twenty-five and twenty-six, Fitchburg Technology Campus First Edition.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and Plan Commission approved, correct?
Yes, it did.
All right, Serena, anything you want to add?
Thank you.
All right, we have the same comments for this as well, the same project we just voted on. Any additional? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, so that is approved. Next one.
Okay, motion to approve Resolution R dash one-one-zero dash twenty-one. C S dash twenty-three eighty-five dash twenty-one. Resolution approving certified survey map request C S dash twenty-three eighty-five dash twenty-one for Mary Ann McKenzie, agent for Bemar Farm LLC to divide property associated with fifty-seven thirty-five Adams Road into two lots. Plan Commission approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Jay, and what's this about, Randy?
The purpose of the C S M is to separate off the existing agricultural buildings. The applicant is also requesting approval of a rezon request and rezon proposed for lot two from A dash X to A dash S, and I think that'll be forthcoming.
I know that they're essentially hoping that the ordinance that allows Wedding Barns takes place and so that they could then take advantage of that opportunity.
I think it's Wedding Barns Educational Center.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any questions? Oh, Jay.
Yeah, well, that was one of my questions. These buildings are just agricultural buildings? There's not a residence on one of them?
I don't believe there's a residence on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then is the sixty-six-foot-wide driveway that they're showing there, is that existing? Or is that proposed?
That really long driveway is there, yeah.
Yes.
All right.
And that's from the county. The county required them to put that in off of Adams Road and didn't want them coming in off of Fish Hatchery Road.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that's approved. Next one.
The next motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero eight. R Z dash twenty-three eighty-two dash twenty-one. Zoning ordinance amendment approving rezon request R Z dash twenty-three eighty-two dash twenty-one by William Linton, agent for Sin Q Terri LLC and Promega Corporation to rezon property along Gunflint Trail from the A dash T, which is Transitional Agricultural District, and R dash L, Low Density Residential District, I dash S, Specialized Industrial District, and P D D dash S I P, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan to P D dash G I P, Plan Development District General Implementation Plan to allow for an office and education training facility. Lot nine parts of lot eight and outlot eight, Fitchburg Center North, and meets and bounds.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Bye. I'll go down to the gym. And Plan Commission approved, correct?
Planning Commission approved, yes.
All right, and do you want to speak to what this project is?
Yeah, I can a little bit. The applicant is requesting approval to rezon those proposed lot one to the P D D G I P to allow for an office and education slash training facility for the USON, USONA Institute.
So Promega project.
Correct.
They're kind of the next thing they're doing. Julia.
Sure, maybe for Mike. I know that we are taking, this USONA is a not-for-profit building. So we are taking a lot that is taxable to convert. If we do the rezon, it's gonna be not taxable. So are they willing to pay for a portion of the city in taxes? Do you know anything? I haven't seen that in the package.
We haven't had any conversations as far as a pilot payment in lieu of taxes.
That will be, we can't, you know, ask them. I don't know, I think that we, so people should know that this one is enough, is great, is Promega. But we are, it's a not-for-profit, so they don't pay taxes, so we are converting a taxable lot to a not-taxable lot. You know, this is the only thing that I want to tell you that we need to. I would like to see if there is any in lieu of payment.
We're sorry, your conference is ending now. Please hang up.
Okay. No, it's not. All right, Jay.
Well, in fairness to that point, this land is currently zoned A T. And agriculture land, it's probably under use-value assessment right now. So they're probably only paying twenty bucks an acre in taxes as it is. So I think the total, the total tax for this, because it looks like it's about a twenty-acre chunk, sixteen, somewhere between sixteen and twenty acres. They're probably not paying more than five hundred dollars a year in property tax as it is.
Promega's paying a lot more than that, but just now this. Other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that's approved. Next one.
Next one. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero nine. R Z dash twenty-three eighty-six dash twenty-one. Zoning ordinance amendment approving rezon request. R Z dash twenty-three eighty-six dash twenty-one by Mary Ann McKenzie, agent for Bemar Farm LLC to rezon from A X, A dash X Exclusive Agricultural District to A S Small Lot Agriculture District, a portion of property associated with fifty-seven thirty-five Adams Road.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and Plan Commission also approved this.
Plan Commission approved, yes.
And then this is, we just talked about this, it's the farm down there. Any further questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, next one, Randy.
The next one was postponed until June as well, so.
Second.
Motion to approve, or not to approve, but to postpone to June.
Signed by Jay. This will be coming back as well. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that's postponed. Next one.
Next one. Motion to approve Resolution R dash one zero nine dash twenty-one. C D P, parentheses, A dash twenty-three eighty-two dash twenty-one. Resolution approving Comprehensive Development Plan Amendment Request. C D P, in parentheses, A dash twenty-three eighty-two dash twenty-one by William Linton, agent for Sin Q Terri LLC to amend the Fitchburg Center Comprehensive Plan to include property associated with fifty-four fifty-three Gunflint Trail.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did Plan Commission approve?
It did approve.
All right, what's this, we just talked about this, so it's the same project, it's Promega.
That's correct, yes, yeah.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, so that's approved.
All right, next one. Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero seven. An ordinance amending chapter twenty-three smart code district ordinance relative to the creation of a special district, S D three, Senior Housing Campus District.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
All right, we've got some people here. Do you want them to speak first to that?
Yes, that would be.
I don't know if Andrew or Jeff or someone wants to speak to this. Go ahead.
So hello, everybody, I'm Andrew Alden, representing the client. We're the architectural firm, A G Architecture out of Wabatoosa, Wisconsin. And we're here to answer any questions about this proposal for the S D three district, the senior housing campus formation.
All right, Randy, do you want to speak to it? Do you want me to speak to it?
Sure, sure. I've got some things written down, but from the evening. But this is a senior housing, well, a senior housing developer is interested in developing lots forty and forty-four of Teravessa. The developer would like to build a senior housing campus that includes independent living, assisted living, central common space that connects the two uses. And while the development will likely comply with most aspects of transect five, the scale of development presents some challenges. To accommodate this, the developers, development staff has worked with the developer to establish a new special district, S D three, Senior Housing Campus District. And this will permit longer lot widths and larger building recesses for porches and outdoor living spaces. Basically, that's about it. There's, there's streetscapes where, in my opinion, were in compliance. It's just that the infrastructure underneath, there were a number of issues with multiple connections with water. Maybe you can elaborate further if needed.
Yeah, this is in smart code, which adds a bunch of challenges because this lot, or this area, I guess, that they're taking, which really works best for them, is really five lots. And they're essentially combining it into two lots, if you will. And the design of the building itself, what you see, follows the smart code standards. But because there's five lots, technically, they would have to have five different water hookups, sewer hookups, five different elevators. They have to treat every lot as its own separate building. As if you could sell it off individually, they never would because the buildings are all connected. But creating the special district essentially is saying they're following all of the T five standards for design. However, we recognize that where this, these lots are, creates some challenges on really the underground stuff. That's where those challenges really fall. And so this is allowing them to essentially treat it as two lots instead of five so that they don't have to have five elevators, five sewer hookups, five water laterals. And that just seemed pretty onerous to have that requirement. And so that's why, you know, I thought it was a great project and makes a lot of sense on why.
And so that's why, you know, I thought it was a great project and makes a lot of sense on why you would do that. And so that's why we're creating a special district for this project. So, is there questions or comments? Dave?
Is, is it consistent with the existing Taravessa, you know, comprehensive plan, I guess?
Yes, it is. Yep. Yeah, this, these are T-five lots, and so this is, uh, essentially acquiring those T-five standards. Julia?
I don't know, I wouldn't say that. I, I really like that we find the flexibility with the, the special district, you know, SD three, you know, to accommodate this, uh, this is a great project, so. So I, I am in favor of this, so.
Anyone else? All right, then all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, thank you for patience, guys. All right, and that is all for Plan Commission.
Last of them.
All right.
Public Works.
Chairman Udell, after all that. All right, Board of Public Works, I move approval of Resolution R sixty-five twenty-one, approving an agreement between the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and the City of Fitchburg to reconstruct and improve the Badger State Bike Trail as part of the Lacy Road construction project. This was postponed from the earlier meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
This is, this is still postponed?
This is still postponed.
Yeah, we're still working out some of the language agreement.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I would like to withdraw. I would approve this.
The attorneys are still working out some of the finer details of the language.
Would you like to move to postpone?
I would. I'd move we postpone Resolution R sixty-five twenty-one.
I'll second that, too.
All right, signed by Jay. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that one's postponed. How about this one?
Next, I'd like to move approval of Resolution R one oh three twenty-one, authorizing acceptance of twenty-twenty-one chip seal and crack seal repair program bid.
Second.
All right, signed by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works did approve. I would just note that, uh, our prices, we got very good prices on this, and the, um, bill is considering maybe having another resolution to do more streets using additional funds that were below the engineer's estimate, which is something is kind of, doesn't happen very often. We're very, we're very pleased with it.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, Julia?
Yes, I, I want to ask a question to Bill about, um, I know that they are doing a lot of work in my district. Um, Forest Down, uh, I don't see Forest Down. And Forest Down is in very, very bad shape. I don't know, Bill, if you have been there, but it's, it's bad, you know what I mean? So.
Yes, we have Forest Down on our resurfacing program, which is, we're going to mill the surface off and repave the road. Uh, we have that on the program for next year.
Uh, for next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else for Public Works, Dave?
Nope.
All right, what about parks? Julia?
Oh, sorry. Um, we didn't meet, but I want to announce that the splash park is scheduled to open June second.
June first.
Uh?
June first.
Oh, well, Scott told me it's June second. So I don't know. I don't know who is lying. Uh, and it's going to be open through Labor Day. And then the park drinking fountains are in the works to be open for the season, too. And also the shelter and the ball field rental are well on their way to a great season. I saw that some of the number, he sent me some of the number of the, you know, reservation, and I am impressed, you know, like in the park shelter rental fee, we budgeted fifty-eight thousand dollars, and we are already at thirty thousand, so, you know? So, okay, so that one is for park. That's it. We didn't make, but I want to share this.
All right, Library Board?
Didn't do anything.
All right, Commission on Aging and Love?
I'm sorry, uh, I was out in the field and I had no internet, internet that morning, so I have nothing to report.
All right, RCC?
Uh, we, RCC is having a joint event with the Tree Advisory Committee on June seventeenth. Um, it's a tree diversity event, and, hold on, I'm just trying to find where it is. It is going to be in Corey Hill Park on June seventeenth at six-thirty PM. And because that park already has like a wide variety of trees, it was intentionally planned that way. So it's a good opportunity to get a sense of what the different trees are, what they look like. Um, we're encouraging people to expand the trees that they choose for their yards, so that we avoid a situation like we are in a lot of parts of the state now, where it's all ash trees, and then an Emerald Ash Bore comes along or something future for a different type of tree, and then all the trees have to get cut down. So, um, we're trying to encourage people to choose diverse trees for their property, and sometimes that's just a matter of learning what's out there. Uh, so I think it should be a fun event, um, again, June seventeenth, six-thirty PM, at Corey Hill Park, and I'll send out the information to the, to the council as soon as we, we have it.
Joe? Um, are fruit trees included in that, like, option or array?
That's a really good question. I do not know, but I can ask that and get back to you.
I just planted two apple trees, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I will ask.
All right.
Choice, good choice.
And what about TTC? You got another motion or another resolution, for sure?
I'll start with the resolution. Uh, I move approval of Resolution R ninety-two twenty-one, approving revision one to the Dane County Cost Share Agreement to fund the CTHMM McCoy Traffic Signals and Intersection Improvements.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
Did TTC approve?
Yes.
All right, and what's this about?
Yeah, so this is, we've looked at this project many times recently. It's basically a function of the fact that we have to update our contracts with the state and with the county every time a change is made, so, um, this is just an update. We are still under budget for this project.
This is the cost-sharing agreement.
Yep.
All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else for TTC?
Uh, well, I guess one thing, we have been having conversations about Madison Metro, our relationship with them, and, and what that future looks like. And there have been a lot of background conversations happening with Madison Metro amongst the partners. And I do think we should have a conversation in the near future with the council about where that stands before we have to make any actual decisions. The problem is that, you know, we, our conversations have to be public, and Madison Metro is still in like the planning phases for some of these things. So I don't know when that has to happen, but I'm hoping that we can do that in the near future, possibly at a committee of the whole meeting. Uh, and I assume that, that you all are interested in learning more about that. If anyone is eager to learn more, I can talk you through it, but obviously, we can't have a group conversation. Um, so anyway, just want to let you know that that's in the works, and I am, it's on my mind about when we can have that conversation as a council.
All right, what about Zida?
Okay, we are meeting this coming Thursday, May seven, but I want to announce, um, the first event, um, organized by the Fitchburg Chamber, um, so, and it's going to be, um, this June second. I have it right, second. Um, so Wednesday from four to six, it's going to be, uh, on the Hop House, and I would like to invite all of you, uh, to participate. It's going to be June Fitchburg Business Outdoor. So it's the big one, the best, the first one in one year and a half. So, um, so I think you received invite. Brandon sent you the invite today, this afternoon. You need to pay ten dollars to register. But this is great, so.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs?
Uh, Ag and Rural Affairs met last Tuesday, the eighteenth. Um, it was a short meeting, actually, but it was, uh, we discussed the certified survey map for, um, Mary Ann McKenzie, and, which we discussed here in council tonight, and then also the rezon for that same property. Um, but, uh, I did give an update on the broadband. We, with the Ag and Rural, are pursuing broadband, uh, or at least the possibility of broadband in the rural area, since it's, doesn't exist or it's very limited. Um, we've been working with a, a number of city staff at this point. Uh, and currently, we're working on a survey to, to actually pin down who has broadband and who doesn't, so. Uh, that survey will, um, be finalized in the next week or so, and needs to go before some city officials, such as the mayor, Misty, and Mike Zimmerman.
All right. Joe?
Something about broadband. Um, as you know, I am part of a board member from MAREP, and MAREP have an initiative. And I sent some of the information to Mike and Joyce, because they are trying to, to develop a pilot city and, and, you know, bring broadband to the area, especially the rural area. I don't know, maybe.
I can, I can speak to that. Uh, they, uh, Mad City Rep will be giving a presentation to the Ag and Rural Committee. So, and I believe that's, uh, scheduled for a week from Friday, so.
All right, EMS, Shannon?
Nothing to report.
All right, Bike Committee, Joe?
Yeah, got a, got a few things. Um, so there is, um, the next bike meeting is on June first at seven-thirty AM. Um, there is a Ride the Drive, um, in the Allied Dunn's Marsh neighborhood from nine AM to one PM. Um, that's just a sort of a broad event that encourages bike safety, so I encourage, uh, you know, folks in the neighborhood or out of the neighborhood to attend. Um, and then, uh, Race Day events had their opening, um, last week, or their ribbon cutting, they've been around for a while, but they renovated their space. It was beautiful. Um, Mayor and a few of the alders were there, as well as, uh, members of the Bike Committee, so. Um, kudos to them. Uh, I think that area will, you know, as I mentioned, attract a lot of, um, uh, a, a lot of events, a lot of tourism, uh, and a lot of activity, um, as it's situated next to a restaurant, as well as, uh, between two bike, two, uh, bike trails, so. Um, looking forward to their success.
Tree Advisory?
We, uh, continued our discussion of the tree protection ordinance, and hopefully to have something for you all later on this year.
All right, Landmarks Preservation?
Nothing to report.
All right, what about Housing Advisory? Joe, are you housing?
Yeah. Thank you. We have not met yet, so nothing to report.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods?
We also haven't done anything.
All right, Stoner Park, uh, Stoner Prairie Park Planning, Randy?
Yes, we've done some things. Uh, we met last week, uh, Wednesday, the nineteenth. There were a number of items discussed, um, one being the, the Stoner Prairie Park Master Plan. Um, they were, they were using a nineteen ninety-six, uh, mapped as a reference, um, and they're working on a new master plan going forward. But, uh, we also worked on updating the budget, including total budget and some of the, uh, amenity costs. Um, then there was, uh, feedback from the entire, uh, committee on, of the impressions from walking through the park space, and, um, and then, uh, planning process for framework, and then they're also working on a survey as well, to see what, what would be the next steps.
All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What about Finance Committee? That's you, too.
Okay, uh, approval of bills, the first item, was a detailed review of all checks issued, checks one-two-two, one-zero-eight through one-two-two, one-six-three, for the period of May first through the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, totaling three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifteen cents. Um, item two, um, motion to approve Resolution R dash one-zero-four dash twenty-one, it's a firewall replacement project.
Second.
All right, signed by Jay, and was this approved? By Finance?
I'm sorry, what? Yes, it was.
All right, and then, uh, what's it about?
Uh, is, I don't suppose Matt's still here? Okay.
No.
This is a, this is, well, it's my understanding, maybe Gabriella can step in, she had a number of good questions, or Jim from the Finance Committee, but it's the city's network firewall that, uh, the life is, uh, is ending and needs to be replaced. Um, the project was postponed in, uh, from twenty-twenty, uh, due to COVID. Uh, IT department is proposing the purchase of a Palo Alto firewall, um, and the required software licensing, licenses and implementation services from Heartland Business Systems, um, with a total, uh, price on it of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents, so.
Do you want to speak to it also, Gabriel?
Yeah, any other further comments?
Yeah, I can add a couple of things. The, um, it needs a two-thirds vote, because it's above what's budgeted. But the other thing to note is that the plan was to replace this every three years. This is actually a contract for five years, which is what's recommended, so although it's more than budgeted, it actually is going to last us longer. And the other thing that we talked about is that we don't actually have a yearly fee. This covers all five years of the software and the actual infrastructure. So, you know, although it's above budget and requires a two-thirds vote, I actually think we're, it's a good, we're doing well. So, um, anyway, I was, I was happy to hear that.
Well, from my understanding, that we're above budget, it's, we, we, there's also some additional funds from equipment we didn't purchase, or so, according to Misty, if she really wants to weigh in.
Yeah, the equipment replacement.
It, it washed out, it was a wash.
Yep.
Out from a dollar standpoint, so.
Misty, do you want to add anything?
Sure. So in the IT internal service line that we have, there is money set aside, um, from their reserves for equipment replacement. And so there's sufficient funds within that to pay for the full cost of this.
Joe, do you have a, okay, Julia?
Uh, no, I want to mention that it's very important that continue invest, uh, the city invest in this type of firewall, because I, I know you have read and listened to the radio, uh, about, uh, those cyber attacks that are happening, and especially they are, they are targeting municipalities, so. And this is what I, I said and made to Matt and asking how we are protected, because, uh, it's happening. Um, uh, but, uh, so, and I think that we, this is a very good es- step to, to continue to improve our networks, because we have not only information about the resident, but it's our communication system, police department, fire, you know, it can be affect, it can paralyze a city if, if something like that happens, so.
Yeah, I think there's a number of municipalities in Wisconsin that have been attacked and had their data held hostage. Dave, do you have a?
I, I, Julia stole my thunder, I'd say exactly the same thing.
Gabriel?
Yeah, I asked Matt, too, about, uh, what the timeline would be, and it, he said, uh, it looks like maybe end of June, because they have to, they had to actually remove what exists already and then install this, so. Um, but it's looking like maybe by the, as long as we prove this today, by the end of June, we could have a new firewall.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that passes. Anything else for Finance?
No, nothing else.
What about Personnel?
Okay, Personnel Committee, uh, met on May twelfth. Um, um, we didn't have a, a, a huge agenda, but we discussed, um, s- uh, what information we should, we, we want to have some information about alders in the city website, a list like a page with all, uh, who we are, uh, what, uh, committee we are, uh, how people can access our, uh, to outreach to us. So something that we are discuss, we discussed with Sarah, and Sarah is going to pass that information to Matt, since the city is in the process to, as you refresh, some of the, uh, the, the website. Also, we did, uh, we approved the authorization to update a job title from Community Center Assistant to Coordinator, so. And we already hired one person, uh, that started working on May seventeen. And then we talked about the city administration, uh, transition and police chief recruitment update. Um, and then, as Mike mentioned, um, you know, the advertisement for the, uh, application for the chief position is, uh, started May twenty-four yesterday, and it's going to go through June twenty-eighth. And then the second step is going to be, um, there's, um, the, the approval of the candidate for the, for interview, but the PFC is going to be the week of July fifth. And then it's going to go through a panel that is going to interview, I think, the shortlist. And then the idea is that, um, PBS, uh, PBS, PFC, it will interview the finalist in a closed session, uh, the week of August twelfth. Um, and then, uh, I think by the week of September thirteenth is the idea that we are, you know, we are going to have our chief. Um, we'll see, but so far, um. So, and the other thing, if you are interested in sending questions, uh, I think, Pam, you can speak to that. I know you're part of the panelist, about the question that, are you requesting question?
I'm not sure that there's, but, yeah, so I was part of the panel that discussed kind of the questions, but that ultimately, the decision rests with the PFC, I think, so.
That's it.
All right, uh, Public Safety?
You know, needing special attention, uh, the person Pamela Richards did not, uh, attend the meeting, so her license was denied.
I believe we need a motion to deny, I believe, Tracy, don't we? Yep, okay, yep.
Yeah, I, I move we deny the operator's license for Pamela Richards.
Second.
Signed by Jay. Any questions? All right, all in favor of denying, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? And opposed nay? All right, that is denied. Anything else for Public Safety? Doesn't look like it. All right, Mayor's Report, a couple of things. People talked about, other stuff I want to talk about, but as you know, they, we are kind of getting new direction from Public Safety, or Public Health, I should say, on the different restrictions for coronavirus. We're going to continue to follow those and, you know, slowly open up the city based on those guidelines. One of those things that, you know, going forward, we're still going to have things like Zoom as an option for residents, especially for residents and for applicants. Now, there are some committees that Valerie, from a legal standpoint, would like us at some point to have people be in chambers if you want to vote and count towards quorum. Council being the main one of those, Plant Commission would be one, probably PFC. There's a few of them that have some ability to make their own decisions versus just being recommendations to the council. So at some point, if you're work, if you're traveling for work, you can participate. You won't be able to vote though, or count towards quorum for council members, but, well, I don't know when that is, I don't necessarily say, you know, starting June third, but sometime, you know, maybe into summer. I know Valerie would be much more comfortable if people who are actually here are doing the voting, just, there's some legal concerns. Then we actually too want to see if we get further direction from the state. So, you know, the state might provide further direction, say, actually, we don't care anymore if you're online. You know, that's possible, as of right now, if you go on what is on there, it would be that, so. But we'll continue to follow all the guidelines and keep an eye on that. The other thing too I wanted to talk about quick, and you'll be getting some more information from Sarah Olson on this. Our next council meeting, we're going to have a resolution for Pride Month and also for Juneteenth. And on June first at four PM, we're planning to essentially ceremonial raise the Pride Month flag. And so you'll get some information on that, you're all welcome, and anyone in the public is welcome to come to that as well. And then also, I believe we're looking at, on Juneteenth, June sixteenth, we're actually going to raise a Juneteenth flag. And we have a staff member in the senior center who every year sends out some information to staff about Juneteenth and what it means to her. And she, you know, said that there's this flag that, you know, she's wondering if that's something that we could have up for, I think we're going to go for a month. And I thought that would be something that would be great to also have, and so we'll be sending out some more information about that. I don't know if that'll be four PM on June, on June sixteenth or not, but again, some more information coming on that, but I wanted to at least get that on radar and let you know that those are two things that we will be kind of honoring and celebrating coming up. With that, I can go to all the reports, and we'll start with District Two this time. So Julia, I will let you go first.
So what do we want to, I leave the meeting for you? Okay. Okay, so, the, I don't have too much to report. The only thing that we received today from Claudia is there's going to be a meeting, a neighborhood meeting with a neighbor from Cheryl Drive about the Stormwater Study. You remember those people, the resident came same in the time, and we approved the study last time. So, there's going to be a meeting on Thursday, June third, five-thirty to six-thirty, and it could be a different option to attend. One could be online, and also you can come to the chambers for the meeting. So, if some of the neighbor are watching and you haven't received the letter, the meeting is June third, five-thirty to six-thirty. Gabrielle and I, we are planning to send information electronically to the neighbors, so in case that they don't, some of them haven't received the information, so. That's it, I don't know.
All right, Gabriel?
Yeah, and also last week, last week? Two weeks ago? Time doesn't mean anything anymore. The, we had a meeting with the developers that are looking at lots fifty-three and fifty-four, which are basically two lots along Wilshire Drive and a little bit of Chapel Valley Road. Basically, it looks like it's part of McKee Farmers Park, it's not, it's private property. But there's a developer that's looking to build a two-story assisted living facility and like a separate building right next to it for a memory care facility in those lots. And so there was a developer meeting in McKee Farmers Park that, you know, Holly and I both attended, some of the other city staff and representatives attended, and a lot of the neighbors came out. If you are curious about the project and want to know more, I did video record that meeting, and I can share that with you, or I can just, we can just chat and I can tell you a little bit more about it. It has not gone through any city approvals yet, but it will probably at some point this year, maybe within a month or two months, something within two months. So anyway, I think a lot of the neighbors that are directly affected know about it, but for those of you that love McKee Farmers Park, it'll have a slightly different skyline potentially by, starting maybe by the end of this year, depending on how approvals go. So that is what we want you to know, and I think that's it.
All right, Jay?
I have nothing.
All right, Shannon?
Me neither.
All right, Jim?
Nothing to report.
All right, Randy?
One thing, for City Council, June, June fourteenth, it's a Monday evening. I hope I have that date correct, Mike Zimmerman? Yes. He's reminded me a few times along with Misty. But there is a finance meeting that evening, but it extends to the entire council. And from what I remember from last year, all city departments will present their budgets. Am I correct? Aaron? And, but just a reminder, that is June fourteenth, it's a Monday evening.
Can, can you send, can, they send us an invite to the alder, so we can put it in our calendars?
I'm sure we can do something.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
That's all I have.
That's it, all right. Dave?
Oh, we have a upcoming virtual Jamestown Neighborhood Association meeting. I left my phone in my car, so it's, within the next seven or eight days, I'll email all of you when it is. We're in the planning process of having a block party in the King James Pocket Park in July. And they continue to have a rash of bicycles being stolen. But I'm very hopeful, Alder sitting next to me has somehow managed magically to come up with a hundred, a hundred and thirty bikes for youth in our two neighborhoods, and he's graciously offered to give me a few that we put in the hands of the children in the King James area. So thank you, Joe, appreciate, appreciate you putting that together.
Sure thing. So, the Jamestown Neighborhood Association is, the meeting is on the second at seven PM. Couple announcements. Going forward, our third episode of D1 All-Stars has been released. I interviewed Jasmine Zapata, MD, MPH. We had a really great discussion about the COVID pandemic, as well as the vaccine. You can check it out on YouTube if you go to D1 All-Stars, it should be on the Fact TV channel. Thanks to Scott for keeping me on task. The event that Dave mentioned, the Allied Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association, will be having a picnic from one to four PM. There will be music, food, it will be in Allied Park on the Madison side of the neighborhood. And thank you to Just Bikes, or Free Bikes for Kids, for providing a hundred and thirty bikes, twenty of which will go to Pocket Park event. And the other hundred and ten will be given out in the Allied Dunn's Marsh neighborhood at that event. We do need volunteers. We need four volunteers early in the morning to move bikes from the Just Free Bikes for Kids to Allied Park. We need ten volunteers to distribute bikes during the events. We need four volunteers to distribute helmets, so that's a total of eighteen people that are needed. If you are able to volunteer, please get in touch with me. And then the Friends of the Teen Center will be meeting soon. They're going to be meeting later this week, so if you have an interest in, you know, helping fundraise for that, you can feel free to get in touch with me, and I'll put you in touch with the chairs. That is all that I've got. Last thing I want to continue to emphasize is please slow down when you drive. I keep getting a lot of emails from constituents all over the district saying that people are speeding near parks, people are speeding down residential areas, and, you know, when, when you do that, you're putting everybody at risk. So, please slow down, please encourage your neighbors to do the same.
All right, yeah, Gabriel?
I just want to remind everyone too that the Fitchburg recycling site has free mulch and compost. Because I know a lot of people are gardening right now, I'm not a gardener, so I can't, I can't speak to the quality, but anyone that's starting their gardens up, keep that recycling site in mind.
Pretty good quality. Yeah.
And I know, actually, to add on, probably RCC, I did go on the Sustainability Bike Tour this weekend, and that was really great, and Phil Groupie from staff did a great job leading that as well. So that was good, we had like twenty people that did that, so. I had to leave, everyone else got ice cream, I had to leave though, unfortunately. All right. Moving on to new business, we have a couple, on Fitchburg's new business, direct referrals. First one, it looks like it's Finance. Randy, do you want to do a motion for this?
Motion to approve Resolution R-106-21. A resolution to support a twenty-twenty-one Wisconsin Department of Natural Resource, Resources Outdoor Recreation Program Application, North Fish Hattery Road Hub, Phase One.
Second.
Signed by Jay, and do you want to speak to this?
I think I would prefer to have Misty speak to this one.
All right.
She's still there?
I don't know, she might be asleep. She's a night owl, actually, she's not asleep.
She, she just sent us an email.
No, I was busy working on my presentation for tomorrow. So this is the resolution for the hub, right? That's the one we're on?
Yep, yes.
Excellent. So, yeah, so I won't go into much about what the hub is. I'm sure you're aware of that project at this point. But even with the CIP process and the budget process, staff always intended to apply for grants to help pay for that project overall. So this particular grant program is through the Wisconsin DNR. The application has actually already been filed. The ordinances allow the mayor to make that authorization to apply for the grant. But this particular grant requires a resolution from council of support, that you're supportive of the project and you're supportive of the grant. So it's direct referral, because it is a little time-sensitive, since the application deadline has passed and we've submitted all the other paperwork, and just need to get this piece in.
I hope everyone's okay with me approving and applying for the grant. Any questions about this? All right, then seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All right, it wasn't a hand raised, good. All right, Public Works, do you want to do this one day?
Move approval Resolution R-112-21, a resolution accepting subdivision improvements and Certified Survey Map 15377 Bowman Drive Extension.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Board of Public Works did approve this. The main reason for this, the developer would like to get his occupancy permit for, by June first. He has fifty, I believe fifty tenants are ready, and Bill and staff have reviewed the improvements and found them to be acceptable. And so that's why this one was a little bit expedited, but all the i's have been dotted and the t's have been crossed. Bill, you want to add anything else? No.
I'm good.
All right, thank you for calling the special meeting as well. Any questions, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, what's committee hole tomorrow, Randy?
Excuse me?
What are the topics for committee hole tomorrow?
I, I didn't hear what you're saying. The, Misty will be giving her presentation for the first hour, and the second hour, which will be most interesting, not that Misty's won't be, but the second hour is on Smart Code, which the Planning Department will be presenting.
All right, and then next council meetings in a couple of weeks, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Signed by a lot of people. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.